I'll call the meeting of the Newport Beach City Council for November 24, 2009 to order. May we have the roll call, please?
The record will reflect that all members of council are present.
Okay, do we have a closed session report from the city attorney?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have several matters on closed session, none of which have reportable action except one matter, but I will get to that in a moment. I would like to clarify something that's just been brought to my attention. We have repeatedly had multiple closed sessions dealing with, for lack of a better phrase, the group Holmes litigation, which includes multiple cases and as well as investigations before HUD and DOJ. But what's concerning me is perhaps it's been misunderstood that when I have named a particular case, that being the Concerned Citizens case, that people think that I'm saying Concerned Citizens is still suing us, and they are not. The Concerned Citizens aspect of that case was resolved actually before I became the city attorney, and we've been working cooperatively with the Concerned Citizens Group as much as we can, trying to work through these issues. That case is no longer pending in that form, but we are still engaged in a cross complaint in the, which we would call the Concerned Citizens Matter. But for clarity, it's the City of Newport Beach versus Morningside case that's still existing, but that's a cross claim in the Concerned Citizens Matter. So for clarity, Concerned Citizens is not still actively suing the city. What I'm really referring to is the district court litigation that's actively being pursued on a cross claim. So my apologies to Concerned Citizens, and if anyone misunderstood or misinterpreted that statement. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor. There's one matter that does require reporting out, and, Mr. Mayor, I would leave that to you, please.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hunt.
Mr. Mayor, just perhaps a suggestion, just for purposes of referring to it in our agendas, could we call it something besides the Concerned Citizens litigation?
I'm going to look for a way to fashion it so it's accurate but doesn't cause concerns, council members. Thank you.
Okay, it's my pleasure to announce that the cities of Newport Beach and Irvine have reached a settlement that involves four separate lawsuits that we were in litigation over, where we were challenging environmental studies on residential projects done in the Jamboree Corridor. Under the terms of the agreement, Newport Beach will be paid a lump sum of $3.65 million for traffic improvements for streets in the airport area, and also the City of Irvine will support our efforts to obtain a 30-acre parcel and develop a community park on property currently owned by the University of California at Irvine near the San Diego Creek and Fairchild Street. And addition to that, we've agreed to drop all four of our legal challenges to the Irvine Business Complex Vision Plan, and both cities have agreed to move ahead in a cooperative nature and not file any further challenges to each other's projects or their general plans. And I think with that, I would like to turn it over to Councilman Daigle, who wants to make a comment or two.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Many of you watched the increased development and densities that went in along the Jamboree Corridor in the City of Irvine, and you saw the high-rise condominiums go up, and we saw them too. In recognizing the need for thoughtful planning, the council drew on the resources necessary to protect our quality of life and ensure that traffic impacts to Newport Beach were mitigated. So we filed several lawsuits and prevailed, and now through the settlement agreement, we are keeping the faith with Newport residents who have been impacted on the ground and on the road because of Irvine's increased development and densities along the Jamboree Corridor. And as the mayor mentioned, the agreement contains $3.65 million that the City of Irvine will be paying the City of Newport Beach within 20 days. The purpose of that funding is to make necessary the traffic improvements along the Jamboree Corridor. During the next year, you will see major roadwork taking place, and at first blush, it may seem strange to you that the city is undertaking major road projects in an economic downturn. But I want to assure you that this is fully justified, and I want to make it clear to you that this is coming from Irvine, their treasury. I want to recognize the resolve of the council who saw through all of this litigation and the efforts of our city attorney, David Hunt, for a positive resolution. And if I could ask our Public Works Director if he can provide a summary of some of the projects that we'll be looking at in the next couple of years up there.
I'd be happy to. Mayor and members of council, we have actually two projects that are very active, so this settlement is very good timing for us. The first project, which is the Jamboree Bridge widening over the 73, which will allow us to have three lanes in each direction, the dual left onto Bristol, and while keeping a dedicated turn lane onto the loop ramp onto the 73. That project is actually approved by Caltrans, and we're in process of acquiring a couple small sliver pieces of right-of-way, which should be done by May 2010, so that's not too far away. And we're expecting construction to occur shortly after, working with OCTA to acquire additional Measure M funds. We'll certainly be able to leverage the settlement monies that you've acquired to do that. Another project we're looking at, and we're working very cooperatively with the City of Irvine staff, is some intersection improvements at Jamboree and Bristol Road, I mean, at Jamboree and MacArthur, excuse me, between Bristol and Fairchild. And what that will do will make it so that we have a fourth northbound through lane to Fairchild on MacArthur, and additional southbound left-turn lane off of Jamboree to MacArthur. Did I say through lane on MacArthur? I meant to say through lane on Jamboree, I'm sorry. That project, we're expecting approval by Irvine in 2010 in March, and we'll hopefully be able to proceed with that project soon afterwards as well. So this is a very good time for both of those projects.
Okay, thank you.
And, Mr. Mayor, may I just, one last note, just for the sake of the record, the council moved and seconded and authorized the entering into the settlement agreement and authorized this mayor to execute the same by seven-zero vote. Copies of the settlement agreement are in the hands of our Public Information Manager, Tara Finnegan, if anyone wishes to obtain a copy of the settlement agreement.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hunt. Okay, would you please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance led by Councilwoman Daigle with the invocation by Mr. Frank Carpenter?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would you bow your heads and join me in an invocation? Lord, we turn to you with grateful hearts as we begin our meeting here and acknowledge that Thanksgiving is a special time of year. We are thankful for this city where we live and work and play, for its beauty and uniqueness and these perfect autumn days. We are grateful for these leaders and the wisdom that they bring to the stewardship of Newport Beach. Please guide them in everything. Amen.
Thank you, Frank. Okay, we have no presentations this evening, so, Madam Clerk?
Notice to the public, the city provides a yellow sign-in card to assist in the preparation of the minutes. The completion of the card is not required in order to address the council. Speakers must limit comments to five minutes on agenda items. The council has the discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items. As a courtesy, please turn cell phones off or set them in the silent mode. Now's the time for the city council announcements of matters which council members would like placed on a future agenda for discussion, action, or report.
Okay, Councilman Daigle.
Yes, Chris Miller, who is our Harbor Resources manager, doing a great job at some very complex issues, wanted everyone to know that, as mentioned before, in October, Colonel Magnus of the Corps of L.A., District, met with members of the city council in Newport, senior staff, to discuss the Lower Bay dredging project, and at this meeting, the city promised to forward the long-awaited sediment chemistry results to the Corps within a few weeks' time. And Chris is proud to say that we have hit our first major milestone and that we kept our promise and have forwarded the draft final sediment report to the Corps for review. So this is a big step forward for us, and really appreciate also the city manager's help in providing all the resources to make this necessary, so thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Gardner?
Yes, at our last meeting, we discussed the passing of Jan Van Der Lutten, what an impact that was on the community, and just wanted to announce that there will be a celebration of life December 6, Sunday, at the Castaways. The public, of course, is invited. And Spahn, he was a very active member of Spahn, which is Stop Fluting, our Newport, and they have had a suggestion that I hope we will consider, which is to take the meadow in Castaways Park and call it Jan's Meadow. I think that would be most appropriate, so that's something that we might want to consider down the road. December 6 is also the Crohn-Demar Christmas Walk. It's a great opportunity to do some early Christmas shopping, have fun, thousands of people walking around, having a good time. And then one more thing, I had asked, oh, a month, two ago, about fire rings, and to me, it was sort of a housekeeping issue, and based on the emails I've been getting, it is not a housekeeping issue. It's a very, very passionate subject. People are passionately for them, passionately against them, and I would just like to postpone our discussions of that. We have so many issues right now, the budget, labor negotiations, that I think something with this much emotion can sometimes take so much staff time, and better to take care of it in calmer waters when we're not, when we maybe overcome some of these immediate hurdles, so you can put that down farther on your list. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Webb?
None.
Councilman Hinn?
I do have something, not so much an announcement as a bit of a demonstration. On the off chance that there are any citizens in Newport Beach that do not think that their city council is fully engaged, I thought I would provide a visible demonstration of that.
It's a healthcare bill. I hope this doesn't fall over.
It could kill somebody.
It's only take another minute. There you go. That's the approximate amount of paper that I received as a council member in roughly the last week or so. And so your council, of course, is charged with reading and understanding all of this and making sound decisions. We hope we do. We know we don't satisfy everyone's need for sound decisions, but we try. And, of course, in addition to taking the time to read and understand this, someone has to write it and prepare it and distribute it, and so I think our citizens in Newport Beach can also be satisfied that our city staff is fully engaged in their behalf. So with that, I'll turn it over to another council.
Oh, by the way, this is roughly 14 inches high.
Councilman Rosansky?
Nothing, thank you.
Mayor Pro Tim Curry?
I would only offer to Councilman Hinn's point that unlike the Congress, we actually read it before we vote.
Okay, thank you. I have one announcement, it's in regard to the agenda tonight. Anyone that's here for item number 25, the Yellowstone hearing, that's number 25, the Yellowstone hearing, that's going to be continued to 6:00 PM December the 2nd, 6:00 PM December the 2nd, so you don't have to stick around for the whole meeting tonight. Madam Clerk?
Consent calendar, all matters listed under consent calendar, items 1 through 22, S-28 and S-29 are considered by the council to be routine and will all be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. The city council members have reviewed, received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommending an action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the council votes on the motion unless members of the council staff or the public request specific items to be discussed and/or removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Members of the public who wish to discuss a consent calendar item should come forward to the lectern upon invitation by the mayor and state their name and item number. If the optional signing card has been completed, it should be placed in the box provided at the podium.
Okay, Councilman Hinn?
I have nothing.
Councilman Rosansky?
Uh, thank you.
Mayor Pro Tim Curry?
None to pull, just a couple of notations. Item 10 is a resolution in support of the Local Taxpayer Public Safety and Transportation Protection Act. This is something I asked to be put on the agenda because, as you know, the state of California is once again facing a $20 billion deficit going into next year, and once again, raiding local government will be on their agenda. So this puts us on record in support of statewide initiative efforts to oppose the raids on local government and local public and safety services that has been going on for much too long in Sacramento. And then just to note that item 11 is our acceptance and adoption of the Orange County Taxi Administration Regulations. You know, that's important, and I would just note to anybody who ever feels that you've been ripped off in a taxi, I actually was ripped off in Seattle, and I called the local regulatory agency, we did a hearing over the phone, they fined the guy 70 bucks for trying to overcharge me. I mean, these rules do work, so keep in mind that taxis are well-regulated through the Orange County Taxi Authority here in Newport Beach.
Thank you. Councilman Daigle?
I'm voting, record a no vote on 6.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Gardner?
We just got some more things on number 3, some more no votes. Are we, I would have asked this during consent, but they weren't there. Are we still well within our limits?
For the sake of interest, we inputted them into the computer, and it comes to 7.3% protest. However, the protest needed to be received before or during the public hearing, which was two weeks ago.
Okay.
So these letters, which were received today, actually don't count.
But even so, it was 7%.
But even so, it was, the maximum was 7%.
Thank you very much. Nothing?
Councilman Webb?
Clarification, are we continuing item number 18, which is the Restaurant Week Contract?
Yes, Mr. Webb.
Okay.
Okay, I have nothing to pull. Mr. City Manager?
Mr. Mayor and council members, staff has a couple of changes to the consent calendar. The first is on item 7. You have a substitute recommendation, and that is to introduce the ordinance, it's ordinance 2009-30, for the first time, and that introduction would include Exhibit 1, but it would delete and not include Recital 7 through 24. It would also not include Exhibit 2.
And what does that accomplish?
What that does is it removes any reference to the inclusionary housing in Lufy. Secondarily, our recommendation is also to continue Resolution 2009-82, which relates directly to the in-lu housing fee, and it sets the fee to January 12, 2010, and this involves a noticing requirement, noticing requirement that we'd like to meet more appropriately. So that's one item. Secondarily, moving along here, staff is going to recommend pulling, just for discussion, item 16. This has to do with the purchase, a negotiated purchase of a new fire truck and two fire engines. I think that's worthy of some discussion by the council. As Councilmember Webb mentioned, staff is recommending a continuance, a pulling of item number 18. That relates to Restaurant Week. We would continue that to a date certain, at least for right now, which would be the December 8 council meeting. Assistant City Manager Wood is asking for, if we need some specific direction there. Actually, I feel like I have the direction we need, okay. Continuing on, just for the members of the public's edification, there's a public hearing, it's item 23. Our recommendation to that is to not hear that tonight, but instead to continue it forward, likely again to be December 8. And then finally, I'd mention that also on the consent calendar, if approved tonight, is item S-29, that's a status report on performance measures and benchmarks. Not suggesting that be pulled, but this is a direction that council gave to me as a new city manager to take, take and embrace performance measurement and benchmarking, and I think the staff report shows that outline. So folks who are interested in that issue should take a, take a look and read that at home, but, so the city is moving forward with the investment it's made previously on our benchmarking effort. So with that, I think I covered everything. Mr. Mayor?
Okay, thank you. Does anyone from the, just comment, does anyone from the public want to pull any items? Okay, seeing none, bring it back to council for a vote.
Well, this will be complicated, but, Mr. Mayor, I would move the adoption of the consent calendar, items 1 through 22 and S-29, pulling item 16, introducing the ordinance on item 7, excluding Exhibit 1 but deleting Recital 7 through 24 and Exhibit 2, and continue Resolution 2009-82 to the January 12, 2010 council meeting, that's from item 7, that we, and also S-28 is part of the consent calendar, thank you, that we continue item 25 till December the 2nd to a special hearing, that we continue item 18 to December the 8th. I think I said continue item 23 to December the 8th. Pull item 16 and record Councilmember Daigle voting no on number 6.
Can you repeat that? 23's not on the consent calendar. 23's not on this consent calendar.
I second what he said.
Yeah, 25, you meant, it's not on the consent calendar.
No, he said 23, though.
Oh, okay. All right. Okay, please vote.
Motion unanimously carries.
Okay, oral reports, whoops, we've got to do number 16. Mr. Kiff?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item 16, as noted, is the recommended, the subject is the approval of a negotiated purchase of one ladder truck and two fire engines from Pierce Manufacturing, and involves a waiver of a council policy, council policy F5. So I asked the fire chief, Chief Steve Lewis, to come and briefly discuss what this item does, because it is a little bit unconventional for us.
Thank you, boss. Mayor Selich, council members, as you may or may not remember, back in March of 2007, you approved a purchase of a truck with American La France, and we were moving ahead with them in the appropriate timeframe that we thought. And as you may or may not know, we do not have that truck, and in fact, they are not out of business, but they were having troubles, and we were very long-suffering and allowed them the opportunity at the advice of our city attorneys to give them due diligence in getting that prepared. But there was a point in time where we had to just say we're not going to go with them. They filed for bankruptcy, and so we left our responsibilities with them and started looking at other apparatus. As you may or may not know, we have a normal replacement cycle with our trucks and our engines. Our engines, we replace if they need to be at 10 years, and our trucks at 15 years. But I can assure you that when those timeframes come up, it's like your vehicle or my vehicle. If they don't need replacing, we don't replace them, we squeeze as much life out of them as we can get. And at this point in time, we have a truck that's at that 15-year, the truck that we were supposed to get in 2007, obviously still needs to be replaced, and it's in the shop quite regularly, and it's putting us in a operational bind at times. We're asking for you to, in relation, have us talk to Pierce, and I'll explain that real quick, and with the two engines. We have two engines that are way past the 10-year frame, and again, working with the General Services and our fleet, who take care of our fleet, they asked us year after year if we could squeeze another year out of them, and we have. We've gone past the 10-year, we're actually at 13 and 14-year, but there, now we're starting to drop thousands of dollars into them, and so we would like to place them. What we're here before you tonight is to ask that we would have the opportunity to deal with Pierce Manufacturing and waive the right of another, what we'd normally would do would be a bid system. But in fact, we have exhaustively engaged in a process with our Apparatus Committee, which is made up of members from General Services and the Fire Department Apparatus Committee, to look at all the apparatus vendors that are out there. So we've really given our due So we've really given our due diligence in looking at all the vendors in the last two years, and even in the process with American La France, as they were struggling to thinking about billionaires. And so they really have looked at all of the vendors and came with an open palette to say whoever was the best one, we will choose them. We didn't come with any preconceived notions of, we want this one or that one, it was really wide open for any of the vendors. And so in that process, and as the staff report explains, it was a lot of things that we're looking at, specifications that meet, that we need for here, the city of Newport Beach, their reliability as a company, their, their history in the industry, we talked to all the vendors, we talked to people that actually have them. So they really did do their due diligence in looking at all the vendors, and though all of them, to some degree, provide a great product, Pierce stood out to meet the specifications, and we felt very comfortable in the industry that they'll be around to meet the needs that we have. And so really, before you tonight, we're just asking, give us the opportunity to negotiate with Pierce, and then come back to you at a future council meeting with a contract for you to agree or disagree with and approve or disapprove.
Okay, thank you, Chief. Any questions? Chief Lewis?
I'll move, I am.
Okay, I just have a couple of questions. Do we lose that seventy-five thousand from American La France altogether, then?
Correct. That was, it was, and really, that we had negotiated, that wasn't, it was a penalty we put on them, and they were willing to include that in their price, so Pierce is not obligated to honor that. So we did lose that on them.
Do you have an idea what the general ballpark figure is for these three trucks?
Uh, yes, and it's one of those where you wince a little bit, because obviously in the fire industry, our apparatus are not inexpensive. Probably, I'm going to be ballpark, we're going to try to negotiate this down a little bit when we sit down, but probably in the one point nine million for all three, two million? I think we can get that down lower. Fire apparatus are not cheap, they are very expensive.
Okay, thank you, Chief. Does anyone from the public want to address the council on this item? Okay, seeing none, I'll bring it back to council.
Please. Just, just one comment, as it relates to that last comment that the chief made, of course, the city maintains reserves for the replacement of equipment, and so it's not like we're going to have to go scrambling around here finding one point nine million because this came up all of a sudden. We planned for this.
It is correct. There are monies set aside for these apparatus, and there's more beyond that, because we do put in, out of my budget every month, every year, into that replacement fund, so there are monies to pay for those. And, you know, we do budget for them, and in fact, there are enough there, because we defer it year after year sometimes, and we, again, we try to squeeze every ounce out of those apparatus, and then, but there are monies set aside at this point to take care of those.
Okay, please vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, next item is oral reports from city council on committee activities. Councilman Daigle?
I have none.
Councilman Gardner?
Yes, at the Coastal Bay Water Quality Committee, we got a report from a study the city's been doing on impacts to our inner tidal zone. As many of you know who are longtime residents, the tide pools at Little Corona have suffered dreadfully over the years, that what were once really vibrant nurseries now have very few things in them. And the Water Quality Control Board was thinking of putting a zero runoff, basically, ordinance into place where we didn't have to control stormwater running into our areas of special biological significance, and this would be literally billions of dollars, probably. So we wanted to be sure that the science behind it was good, and what we're finding is that probably, is what a lot of us suspected, but which we had no science to back us up on, is that it's human impact, foot traffic, that's causing a lot of our problems. And so we'll be able to take this evidence and forestall unnecessary water quality regulations that wouldn't have helped the health of the, the tidals. So this is something really quite cutting-edge the city's done, and I just wanted people to know that we do get a lot of bang for our buck when we do invest in water quality issues and studies.
Thank you. Councilman Webb? Councilman Hen?
I have nothing.
Councilman Rosansky?
Nothing, thank you.
Mayor Protim Curry?
Just briefly, in the past two weeks, I attended three meetings with the League of Cities on legislative issues and finance issues that are facing cities in California, and I would let everybody know that the Orange County League of Cities are focused on two real important issues. Number one, as we talked about before, the taking of local funds by the state. The state will be about twenty billion dollars out of balance next year. Our highway user fees, the gas tax monies that we use to maintain our streets would be the most likely and most vulnerable funding source that we have, and so we're gearing up, along with our fellow cities, to fight that effort through a statewide initiative, but also through working with our local legislators. Very proud that our three legislators, Tom Harmon, Chuck DeVore, and Van Tran, all opposed that effort in the legislature this last session. And then the other issue is the increasing cost, which has become a statewide problem relative to pension costs. We're seeing a ballooning cost due to the losses by CalPERS and the stock market, and what you're seeing are that cities throughout the state are finally getting together and working on a common solution to bring these costs down and to share the participation in the cost of these pensions, and to provide alternatives going forward that will keep this from really hemorrhaging local government budgets throughout the state. So expect that to be a top priority issue with a lot of focus over the course of the next year.
Thank you. I have no reports this evening. Madam Clerk?
Public comments. Public comments are invited on non-agenda items generally considered to be within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record.
Okay, anyone wishing to address the council on any item not on the agenda, now's the time to step forward. Anyone want to address the council?
There's the emergency operating assembly in that category?
Nope, that's on the agenda. This is for non-agenda items.
Hi, my name is Lisa Sabo, and I'm from Newport Beach, and I appreciate all your work that you do. And first, I'm here to ask that you ask the governor to help us rescind the sale of the Orange County Fairgrounds. And last week, I was at the Costa Mesa City Council meeting, and they unanimously voted to ask the governor to rescind the sale of the Orange County Fairgrounds. And the mayor of Costa Mesa asked us to come to our city councils to spread the word, to ask. And today, at the Orange County Board of Supervisors, they adopted a resolution to also ask the governor to stop the sale of the Orange County Fairgrounds. And here I have a copy of the resolution for all of you, and then also the good news, it's not a lot of writing. I can relate, I copied the PowerPoint that the Costa Mesa City Council put together, and so I have it for all of you. It's a lot of pictures, so, but they did a great job.
I especially like picture books.
I know, it's like a picture book. And some are bigger, I came out and couple different printing forms there. But, you know, you know, why? You know, Orange, or California already, as a citizen in California, we already own this property of the fairgrounds, it's a great piece of property, a lot of wonderful community things happen, happen there. So why force the, either the city of Costa Mesa or the county of Orange to buy the property that we already own? And Orange County is already a donor county, and I think it was just a few minutes ago, Curry, you had said raid local government. They're coming here to Orange County, this is the only piece of property in California that they've decided to sell, and that's because it's Orange County. Orange County is already a donor county to Sacramento, why should we give more of our money and give away property that's valuable to the Orange County citizens and to Newport Beach? My mother, I live on Lido Isle, and my mother, who's been a thirty-plus-year resident of Lido Isle, said to me tonight on the phone, she said, it just sounds, you know, selling of fairgrounds just sounds un-American, you know? And then I had a girlfriend that lives down here on the peninsula today, or a few days ago, she said to me, her three kids go to Newport Owl, and she said the trips to Centennial Farms, the field trips to Centennial Farms are some of the most valuable field trips, and when you live on the peninsula or in the beach properties, where else will your kids ever see lettuce grow? You know, really? And so we need to keep the heritage, Orange County fairgrounds alive, and so I ask that you put on your next meeting's agenda, this as an agenda item, that the Newport Beach City Council adopts the resolution, and I think that's it. I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Okay, any other public comments and non-agenda items? How many people want to speak on this fairground issue? Can we just maybe have one more speaker? We don't need to hear all of you, I think, maybe just raise your hands as far as who's here to support the previous speaker's position? Okay, thanks. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Chris Cutting. I'm a resident of the city of Orange. I've grown up here in Newport Beach, I have family down here on Fifteenth Street on the peninsula, another family member down on Tenth Street on the peninsula, I've grown up on the peninsula. I, too, am here to speak not only on behalf of myself as a resident of Orange County against the sale of the fairgrounds, but also as the Associated Student President of Orange Coast College. We, as students, have roughly twenty-five thousand eight hundred and sixty-nine head count students, add another probably thousand faculty, staff members, to keep that school operational, and we only have about five thousand seven hundred parking spaces. Our overflow parking flows into the fairgrounds, the sale of the fairgrounds, where are we going to be parking, where are we going to, you know, we're going to be sitting in traffic on Harbor and on Fairview, which is, of course, going to affect the traffic of people trying to get out here to the beach. Also, we utilize the Pacific Amphitheater for our commencement ceremonies, the graduates getting their AA degrees, the certificate graduates, a lot of these are people that are residents of Costa Mesa in the Newport area. Again, with the sale of the fairgrounds, where are we going to graduate? So I just implore you that you take a look at the Costa Mesa City Council's resolution. The Associated Student Government will be looking at a resolution ourselves next week on our Wednesday agenda, opposing the sale of the fairgrounds, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, any other public comments?
Hi, my name is Kathy Hopstetter. I've lived in the city of Costa Mesa since the early, well, mid-sixties, actually, I was a little child bride that came here when my husband was on his way to Vietnam, and we stayed. And I got to tell you, you know, I'm talking, I'm not bad at public speaking, but you guys intimidate me. I'm just telling you that you guys intimidate me a little bit, and I think that's kind of scary, and I think that's kind of sad. I am here for the fairgrounds, and I'm here, if it's truly about money, if it's truly about money, if the state is about money for their deficit, the fairgrounds isn't the most valuable piece they have to sell. If it's truly about land, there's a lot bigger pieces that have a lot more to do with it. For us, it's a lot more about our lifestyle. You guys here in Newport Beach, if they were coming to take your beaches, we, the citizens of Orange County, would be here to fight for you also. And we're here to ask you guys to please, please stand behind us, agendize the item on the fairgrounds, and help us save that fairgrounds. The lack of transparency, the, the why this has happened, the how it has happened is of great concern to all of us, and I think it was, you said something about the taking of local money, it's the taking of local land, and that's, 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 to me, scary. It's more about buildings, it's more about concrete, it's more about everything becoming big commercial venues, and do I think that it'll stay a fair? If I really thought it was going to stay a fair and a fairgrounds and our lifestyle not be changed in that area, I'd be all for it. I'd have a little tiny cottage two blocks from that fairgrounds, and I love what goes on there for our citizens, I love what goes on there for our children. We have Olympians with no money at all that started there and have scratched their way through to the top of the Olympic ranks. We brought home Olympic gold this year for the first time for this coast, and it started there on the, on the fairgrounds. The young man named Richard Spooner, another one, Debbie McDonald, and Will Simpson. It's more than buildings, it's more than concrete, it's more than that. It's about the lifestyle for us, the lifestyle of our children, and when it's gone, it's gone. We can't come back and say, oh, should have thought about it, should have worked on it. And I ask you guys to really, really personally look at what's going on over there, make an informed decision on your own, and really stand behind us and help us save that fairgrounds. It's more about the heritage and our lifestyle and who we create and our children and what we pass on than it is about all this political nonsense. What are we passing on to our children? For me, that's the issue. And I ask you to agendize it and investigate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Hi, my name is Dorothy Kraus, and I'm a resident of Newport Crest, and my comments tonight are related to Crest residents' concerns regarding the environmental impact issues that we do not believe are addressed in the environmental impact report for Sunset Ridge Park. Specifically, we have concerns regarding the environmental impacts listed in the table one point one of section one in the executive summary. With respect to item four point four dash two on the air quality and climate change, quote, this section reads, "During the three-month mass-grading phase, nitrogen oxide emissions could exceed the South Coast Air Quality Management District CEQA significant thresholds on days when and if soil is exported to distant off-site soils locations. The temporary impact would be significant and unavoidable because mitigation could exasperate noise impacts by extending the construction schedule," end quote. Newport Crest residents are concerned that some of the excavated soil will be kept on site to build a berm along the perimeter of Newport Crest where we live. More of the excavated soil will be moved to Banning Ranch property, which borders Newport Crest along another perimeter. The EIR does not address what the city will do to protect us, to protect the residents in their homes from the emissions. How would extending the construction schedule, as the report indicates, mitigate the problems? Again, in that same table, one point one of section one of the executive summary of the DEIR, item four point four dash two, quote, states, "During the periods of mass grading, when work would be concentrated within a hundred and sixty-four feet of the Newport Crest condominium development, particulate emissions from the project site have the potential for a short-term exceedance of twenty-four-hour PM-ten and PM-two-point-five ambient air quality standards at the nearest residences. The local construction impact would be temporary, significant and unavoidable impact," end quote. The, the standards, the ER, the standards in the EIR are, it's unclear whether they're federal or state for micrograms per cubic meter, excuse me, meter of air, and our question is what effect would the elevated emissions potentially have on persons with compromised immune systems, and has this been considered? Item four point four dash.
Your, your time's expired.
Oh, thank you very much.
You can submit those comments to our staff. Is the comment period still open on that?
Yes, it is.
Yes, until December eleventh.
Yeah, so submit them to the staff, and they'll be incorporated in the EIR.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Dr. Deborah Ferber. I'm a former resident of Dover Shores, Newport Beach, California, for twenty-two years. I'm also a business owner for over twenty-five years, and my great concern, of course, is the fairgrounds. There are over one thousand business owners that contribute throughout Orange County, they're tax dollars, at the fairgrounds, and they will be affected negatively. Now, please understand, I don't believe that maybe perhaps everyone is a Republican here at this meeting, but I assume ninety-nine point nine percent are, and if they are, they believe in small businesses and growing those small businesses. I'm speaking in behalf of the business owners that have no voice, that work night and day to support their business and grow it, and that's something that the Republican Party believes in, and that's what I believe in. So please, no matter who helped you in your last campaign, please remember, there are business owners that contribute, will grow, and there are several millionaires that came from the incubator program at the Orange County Marketplace. Boone Boards was purchased for forty million dollars with Avery Marketplace. Tilly's Marketplace was started before Tilly's even began. There is no place in Orange County where you can pay seventy-five dollars a day to see if your product or services will sell in Orange County. I would like to see any of you here try and find a facility like that. Nowhere can that be found. So please, I'm relying on all of you to be fiscally conservative, to not rely on those that have helped you to become nominated here tonight, not to be swayed by those in higher places because there might be some type of monetary, and I say monetary, consent to try and sell this facility. Please back the people that believe in you, vote for you, and believe in the Republican Party that believes in small business. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else? Okay, seeing none, I'll close public comments. Next section of our agenda is public hearings, item number twenty-three, the Cost Recovery Ordinance Fee Resolution and Master Fee Schedule. I believe we're going to continue that, Mr. Kiff?
That's correct, Mr. Mayor. The recommendation is to continue that to
The recommendation is to continue that to December 8th.
So move. Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, please vote.
Helen Rosansky.
Who?
Helen Rosansky.
You guys vote?
Please vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay. Okay, our next public hearing is on the Newport Beach Civic Center project. This is a resolution certifying the environmental impact report for the City Hall and Park Development Plan, a resolution adopting a statement of overriding concerns and approving a schematic design for the project and authorization to prepare a design-build request for proposal for the parking structure. Mr. Kiff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and council members. Today, tonight, is a milestone in the civic center process that started almost two years ago, and involved a design competition and an ultimate selection of the folks you will see here in a few minutes from Boland Swinski-Jackson and Peter Walker Partners, our architect, our landscape architect. And as noted, tonight, if you approve the recommended actions, you'll be certifying the environmental impact report for this document, for this project, as well as approving a resolution which approves the schematic design. And just for folks at home, remember that a process, a project like this involves a fairly long process, and schematic design is but one chance where you, but one point in that process where you take a step forward, and then from here, you start to really refine those designs down, starting to draw where pipes are and electrical outlets, and that's my layperson's understanding and explanation of it. And if this project is certified tonight, things are going to happen fairly quickly, including an opportunity to do some mass excavation as soon as mid-January of the site. And for folks at home, remember, this is the site at 1100 Avocado, just north of the library. So tonight, we're going to go through a couple of fairly brief presentations with you, but I also know that for the full council, this is the first time you'll have seen this full presentation since you last left the project in April, even though we've talked about it without the architects down here with us the last two meetings. So with that, I'm going to introduce Greg Matola with Boland Swinski-Jackson. And then, as we work through this, including the public comment, I'd like a few moments at the end just to thank some people who've worked hard on this to bring it to the date that this is, that we hit exactly the date we planned on this, and I think that's an important thing to remind folks.
Okay. Thank you, Dave. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, first of all, thanks for having us come down this evening and present the design to you. We're going to actually do this, try to do this pretty quickly. We're going to do about 10 minutes or so on talking about the park and the landscape design, and then we'll do another about 10 minutes talking about the buildings that we're proposing as part of this complex. And with me tonight, Sarah Keel, partner at Peter Walker &amp; Partners, who's our landscape architect, and I'm going to ask her to come up and talk first about the park. And so, Sarah?
Thank you. Thank you for that, too. Well, first, I'd like to say thank you very much for the opportunity to do this. It's been actually a pleasure working on it with your civil, with your city staff and with all of you, as well as with a lot of input from the community and the design committee. Opportunities, as I think I have said before, like this, don't come along very often. Many people in your shoes don't get to do this in their term or in their lifetime, so we feel particularly honored to have been part of this for the history of your city. I'm going to run through our presentation. It's abbreviated from where we are before, and I've put at the end some of what I think might be topics that we would want to go to in greater depth, perhaps during the question and answer, but I've abbreviated it so that we can move forward fairly quickly. I've said before that I think the best places are made with building and landscape together, and this is obviously a historic photo, but we really believe in this, and we really believe that the way that the architecture, the library addition, the garage, and the new City Hall work together with the park is more than the sum of its parts. We've gone through sort of an excruciating exercise to really get to know the site in a bunch of ways. We've looked at particularly sensitive issues of views, what people want to see, what people don't want to see, and really trying to get to know the character of the site, as well as the larger community and the landscape. We've considered a number of issues in terms of sustainability. Obviously, water use is one of the primary ones for landscape, but also planting and planting design in general and other materials questions. Rather than sort of setting those ideas aside, we've tried to integrate our solutions into the design. So this is a diagram that looks at stormwater management and shows how what could be an engineered system has been worked into a park language and become part of the landscape. There'll be a series of perspectives that sort of give you a sense of the character throughout this. So this is on Avocado driving to the south just before you get to Farallon that shows how the building, together with the planting, compose and make sort of a formal entry court, and you can see the nautical flagpole and the turn into the site, but really setting up an identity for the project. That's a view taken from about right here. This is the overall design of the project as it stands now, putting together the new pieces of architecture with a park design that we really feel like has a number of characters within it, but also spans the length of what is a very linear and very long site to make one single whole, which we thought was an important part of our charge to bring particularly the north parcel together with the rest of the park. Looking at it in detail, this is that arrival court that we were just talking about here. We imagine this to be a paved area of sort of our highest quality of material right now that's in there as a stone, but the main thing is that within our hierarchy of where we end up for materials, that this would be a very high level. This is the point at which really the park landscape comes together with the landscape more around City Hall itself, and we worked very hard to bring those languages together. This is a sense of sort of what that feels like from the street and the way it composes. I think in previous renderings, we weren't showing the sale as being so close to the street, but really, we think of this as kind of a visual signpost telling you that you're arriving and setting you up to go in, and when you get to the plaza area here, you take a few small steps down into sort of the front porch of the building, and this is all feeling very comfortable to us and sort of generous in terms of proportion and a sense of arrival. These are two sections then cut, looking one to the north and one to the south across here. So looking to the north, where you see the mounting topography beyond and the magnolia trees at the north end of that, and then looking to the south, where you see the end of the garage, this is MacArthur over here and Avocado, and sort of how this composes. One thing that has evolved a bit, I think, since we last talked here, is just sort of the design of how the library and library addition come together with the south end of our project, and it was very important to us that this hangs together. We have identified a number of existing pine trees, there are aleppo pines on this side, and they're shown in sort of a darker gray, and we're going to build on that language and sort of bring it around here. It was important to the librarians, as well as people we talked to in the library, that that sense of visual greenery was maintained outside of the library. So putting back something that didn't feel like back of house was a big part of that effort. We're also starting to suggest that that comes around a little bit here to disguise the loading dock, and maybe starts to come this way a little bit. We've been hearing that these olive trees are in poor health and quite expensive, so we're starting to suggest that possibly this could come a little bit that way as well, so that when you're coming along here, you're not looking right into the loading dock for these buildings. This is the character of that, so then this is the section from the end of the garage to what is your current parking lot for the library. The scale of this is such that we would imagine having tables and chairs and perhaps umbrellas so that there would be additional outdoor reading space that would still have Wi-Fi access. This is the backside of the building and the garage, and the sort of character of that as well with the library addition above, but you can see sort of how this composes into one elevation. The civic green itself, we've talked about quite a bit in terms of a flexible space. We really feel like the proportion of this has come together to make it a very significant space that will be used for all kinds of things with, let's go back one. Within that, we also then sort of have this interior space. We also have our public identity of the planting along MacArthur and a public identity of the planting along Avocado. Within all of this, we're trying to come together with a materials palette that links the park back to the City Hall, and this is sort of our working palette, so the pathways would be made of a stabilized DG. We also have poured-in-place concrete, the riprap stabilizing slopes, the bark mulch, and artificial turf in the dog park, flagstone for paths in the green, wood decking for the bridge element, and a brick that's being used, and there's some samples over here if you'd like to look at them, for the paved area underneath the roof of the building. We came upon an interesting opportunity during this process, which is you have kind of a spectacular collection of subtropicals here at your existing City Hall. We've carefully selected the ones that we think you could reasonably get access to around the outside as opposed to in the courtyard, and we're getting those costed right now. There's a plan out to see what it would cost to move some of these, but we believe it would provide a continuity in terms of sort of a cultural history, as well as being something that would give you a real bang on day one in terms of plant material. We imagine that we would use that plant material up here, making sort of a community terrace, perhaps here, and maybe a little bit down here, and we really see this space then composing the planting along Avocado and MacArthur and these sort of accent plantings within there. I've talked before about how many people will use this space. This is sort of the little ants here and here and here showing ways that the space might get used, but we certainly imagine that mostly it would be used for events related to the city council or the community or this group here in sort of smaller numbers, but you would also have the opportunity sometimes to have large events. This is a reworked perspective of sort of the feeling and the character of that civic green, and I think there was some concern before about how open it would feel, but I think this perspective really reveals the proportion and the sense of openness in that space and the reworking of the architecture back here. It's really anchoring the end, and you can see some of the transplanted material there from the existing City Hall. In terms of a way of introducing the rest of the park, this park really is about passive recreation, it's about planting, and I think it's grown to be also as a potential site for public art. I wanted to particularly point out, because this has been confusing in other meetings, that we do have a bunch of amenities. So everywhere that you see a red dot along a pathway, that's a bench. Everywhere that you see an orange one, that's a picnic table. We also have some viewfinders, one up here, and then you have these sort of level lawn areas that you can get into, but there is this level of sort of standard park stuff woven into the whole design. These benches are also planters, or sort of, not, not like this one, sorry, to be clear. But that's something people were concerned about, what would be in here, and I just wanted to be clear that we had it, because it's come up more than once. Another element which has also come back to the project based on discussion is this idea of having elements for children and a children's play area or children's discovery elements. We've taken a particular attitude that the elements in this park should be part of the program of it being a nature park, that you wouldn't just make a park just like every other park. And so we've selected things where kids can pretend to be spiders or play on animals, or perhaps there would be birdhouses or other things that would be part of that, and we're still working out the final version of what these would be, but they would be in that family of things. We've proposed locating some of them on the backside of the Belvedere, as well as some of them at the meadow area here, and maybe we would even have some in here as well, but they would be located in smaller scale at more than one place. This is then the detail for the Central Park area. To highlight for you, there are three bridges, one here, one here, and one here. This is the lookout area down below that is very similar to the existing meadow view that was important in the original program for this. And this park is the part of the park that is perhaps maintaining the existing wetland and perhaps the most true to officially designated native plant communities. There are some existing conditions here in terms of flora and fauna, and we are going to work with that, but also try to enhance it and make it more accessible and make some of those areas that are a bit old, the plants themselves have grown old and haven't been burned and so forth, and so there's a number of things we'll do to try to bring up the quality of that area. And this is a view then of one of the bridges crossing across that area, and they're very direct, simple bridges. We haven't, we haven't tried to design them in such a way that they would be either over-the-top expensive or showy, we really feel like they should be part of the natural park. We intend to remove the invasive exotics and to transplant the 18 Colt or salt bushes as recommended by the EIR. And in terms of the bridges themselves, these are examples of a bridge in Switzerland gives you this sort of straightforward character, although we're also talking about whether or not we would use a color on them as well to sort of play up that experience. And you can see the scale then of the bridges here, how that gets made into sort of a taller bridge with a roof for part of it for shade for the bird blind and the proportion of that, and then the deck bridge, which gets wider and becomes more of a place to rest. And then this is a view from the corner of the deck bridge here, looking back up at the Bird Blind Bridge and the Belvedere beyond, but I think there's going to be a very rich set of experiences as you move through the park. Within the character of that middle area, we've talked about sort of the overall scale of it. There's obviously the planting again along MacArthur, these meadows, the planting within the wetland, another meadow, and then over here, a MacArthur, I think I call that MacArthur's Avocado. We still think that all of these meadows would be places that could be used for events or group gatherings, and they're actually pretty large, and that there would be opportunities to build on the natural character with public art elements that would add to things that you would find in this sort of more natural part of the park. And this is a view within one of the meadows, and I think we're particularly excited that this sort of referencing back to the ocean and the bay occurs, and you get these wonderful views from multiple points in the park, but the character of this with a sort of rougher grass, some shade trees, and picnic tables and benches, and then the sort of wetland planting over here is really beginning to compose. Greg is going to talk more about this. This is the bridge that crosses San Miguel. That has really been worked into the design and the path network now, so you can get through, and Greg will have some three-dimensional pieces. I think this is one of the elements that is something we would all really love to have, but it is definitely beyond our original dreams, I would say, of this, and we think it would add a lot to the project, but it is a big element in terms of the budget as well. This is the north parcel, which is where we have the dog park that you can see up here, as well as surface parking that you can see here, and then the walk up to the Belvedere here. If I haven't said before, all of our paths are ADA unless you see steps, which would make them not, but you'll, they're, those are mostly cut-throughs that we think are going to happen anyways. We have gone ahead and formalized this cut-through that is happening now with a set of stairs, just sort of a dirt path back there, and we're sort of fixing that. This, again, is another place in terms of large numbers of people that we really think will be used over time by a lot. And so just quickly then, this is the elevation along MacArthur, starting at the north end. You can see sort of the fence of the dog park in there, coming down to the bridge at San Miguel, and that's cut off, but I think Greg will show a more detailed model of that anyways. And then this is the overall section of the dog park, looking at sort of a narrow part of it relative to Avocado and MacArthur, and sort of a broader piece of it in terms of how it actually sits into the landscape. This is a perspective then of the dog park area. Again, you do see this sort of wonderful horizon of the water out here. You can see people walking on the path here, as well as the dogs in the dog park back there, and this sort of overall forested character of the northern part. It came up, I think, in our very first meeting, this question of, but what can I do there? And so we did sort of three pathways that I'm just going to make reference to about if you're an art lover, maybe you would start at the library and make your way into the park and up to the Belvedere, but there would be things to see along the way. If you came to go on a picnic with your kids, you might park in the garage and come and just use the Central Park meadow area and run around and make a loop and have a picnic there. And if you were a nature lover, maybe you would take the bus to not drive your car and come down from the north and use that Central Park and not even use the bottom area. But I think our point is to say your community has a diversity of values. We've heard about a lot of them, and we really believe a lot of those values are represented in this park in terms of opportunities. But I think our point is to say your community has a diversity of values. We've heard about a lot of them, and we really believe a lot of those values are represented in this park in terms of opportunities for how it might be used. This is a centerline section running through the park, and you can see the variation in terms of the topography through the wetlands with the bridges, and in terms of characters as you come down to sort of the much more formal part at the bottom of the park by the city hall. And then, oops, the elevation along Avocado, which is by far the most showy really of the elevations in terms of how that planting character works with the bridge beyond, coming down into the wetland where we've really kept a lot of open views across from MacArthur, how you see City Hall composing with all of this, and coming down towards the library. This is a view where I'll make a transition back to the architecture. We've worked really hard with them to sort of make sure things are working together. And this is a view from the south, looking up at perhaps a cocktail party happening here on the terrace. But there are a lot of little spaces and more intimate spaces within this part of the project that I think give opportunities for indoor-outdoor events at the city hall, as well as for people who are working here to come out and have lunch or take a break outside. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's shift gears a little bit and talk a little bit about the buildings that we're proposing to go into this great park. Sarah pointed out this kind of entry perspective, and for us, this is also a good point to remind us that this new development is going to be really the front door for your city, and it's going to have to say a lot about Newport Beach as a place. So we think it's a wonderful opportunity to do something really special. So just, I think Sarah jumped in and talked a lot about sort of the pieces and parts, but I thought it might be worth just giving everybody a quick kind of orientation, just a reminder of where we are. Avocado on the bottom of this sheet here, and then MacArthur along the top. We've got a 450-car parking structure that hugs that MacArthur hillside, and it forms the civic green space, really important public green space that becomes sort of the front porch, if you will, of the city hall building itself. And the city hall building is kind of composed of this two-story office building and this public assembly space complex here of a community room and council chamber, and then really important addition to the library, which now gives the library kind of a second face and a really important public space that really becomes the head of the civic green. So Sarah already showed this image, but I wanted to bring it up because I wanted to talk a little bit about what the buildings look like, because that's always a big question for people, is, so what are these buildings going to look like? So you've got a sense here that what we're really trying to do, and this comes right out of our development from the competition entry scheme, which is a building that's a lot about kind of an airy, light structure, very modern and contemporary, yet sort of feels appropriately scaled for your community. So it goes down to the refinement of this kind of idea that we have a kind of a series of repeating bay forms that have these wave-shaped roofs. And this concept with this overarching roof structure that forms a lot of outdoor sheltered circulation spaces is really the basis of the composition. And what you see here on the top of this screen right now is the long elevation of Avocado, the red line showing kind of our view plane limitation, and then a couple of blow-ups of that, the sort of composition of repeating bays that are separated with some of the kind of core functions or support spaces separating that from the office functions. And then the idea of a much more kind of gestural form for the council chamber that really becomes kind of a dynamic form, a very signature piece of your building with the backdrop of the city hall itself. Somebody was asking me a little bit about Avocado, where we've got some exterior balconies, and what those are going to be like and what function they serve for the architecture. And for us, the idea of having something that helps to modulate that facade along Avocado, we have these second-story small balconies that become, not only they become important places to kind of have an outdoor relationship to the landscape for the second-floor city departments, but also become a way to kind of punctuate that long facade and also get glimpses or views back towards the water. So we find them to be kind of effective device architecturally as well as functionally. Now, these couple of precedent images here are just the idea of what it's like to have a cantilevered balcony hanging off your building. Back to kind of your front door elevation and what it's like to have your council chamber composed with a community room. We think this is going to be a really important set of spaces that'll function really well as well as become an important kind of expression of the city government, very transparent and inviting. You see in the distance here is that new headhouse elevation of the library and the garage here, MacArthur Boulevard up here. Now, the view in the civic green, looking back towards the city hall, you can see the composition again of these repeating bays going up the slope. You see the view plane line there, the community room up at the head, and the library addition really anchoring this complex at the south. That south elevation then, where that library addition kind of comes and meets civic green, we've tucked our kind of service elements for city hall down in a lower-level kind of partial basement, and you see the two-story elevation there of city hall. So now this is sort of getting at what the character of that kind of curtain wall building is, and curtain wall is kind of a glass facade. You see the roof structure becoming also a way to have nice outdoor sheltered public circulation, very inviting entrances to the various departments. This happens to be the one that would be anchoring the one-stop shop. And some precedent images of what that kind of space would be, and we think it's going to be a very exciting, very forward-looking, dynamic complex. You see a few ideas of exposed structure and shaded trellis-covered walkways, and just a few more examples of what that's going to be like. Tonight, on the table over here, invite everybody to take a look when they get a chance. We have put out some physical samples of what we're proposing for the palette of the building's exterior envelope materials. Things like, we have this stone for a few walls in the building, kind of some accent walls that we're proposing. It's a Tennessee marble. It's a very kind of a material that's been used a lot in very important civic buildings. We also have these metal zinc shingles that we've got in a few places as well that have a really nice dynamic quality as light moves across them. We have some flat metal panel, and you've seen the curtain wall. We also have shading elements that happen to take care of both glare control inside the building and also to help protect nighttime views from the neighboring homes uphill. The kind of effect that that has of being a very kind of comfortable daylight space but not having the kind of issues of glare. And the idea of having some wood brought into the material palette, in this case, we've got some wood ceilings planned for certain parts of the building. City hall itself, this two-story office building, starting to really develop how all the departments will work within it, the kind of nature of the public interface with the building. You see this kind of exploded axonometric drawing that shows in the centerpiece the one-stop shop, which is one of the places that a lot of people will interface coming to the city for services, and what that interior character of your workplace arrival experience, and then second floor at that core location, and then the actual one-stop shop, the public counter, and what that's going to feel like as a space. Second floor is a lot more, a similar kind of pattern of development for the other departments within the city government departments. And you see kind of a cutaway section perspective showing the nature of that waveform space and the kinds of open office environments that'll really foster a lot of good interaction for city staff departments, give everybody good adequate access to daylight and views and fresh air. And just a few kind of images of the kinds of space that we're talking about for the various work environments, employee kind of kitchenette and, you know, exterior daylight circulation and collaboration spaces. A few more examples of that kind of work environment. And so, you know, in addition to that development, just not to go into exhaustive detail, but really making sure all the different program pieces fit, all the different departments, their relationship from one to the next all work. You can see the second floor, the same thing. We do have this lower-level basement plan, which takes care of a lot of our kind of mechanical services for the building. A lot of the utilities come in there. And also now, we're showing the idea of having our kind of training room space here that keeps the footprint of our building confined to just to the office building itself, so the kind of training activities that would be important for various kind of events. Wanted to talk a moment about the civic center public spaces, the real kind of where a lot of different kinds of events will happen. It's also important to think about, you know, that as being kind of part of this composition of the interface where the public comes to get together for various kinds of activities in kind of the setting for this kind of assembly occupancy. I wanted to put out this image. This actually is a little snippet of the plan of the existing library friends' room, and just to give a sense of the scale of that as it compares to the proposed larger community room. And also then to put that in context of that, we've kind of looked at this a couple different ways. One, where we were trying to accommodate, you know, a bigger crowd, and one, this is what the original program had called for. And during the course of our schematic design, we were asked to sort of study, you know, what would it be like to increase the size of that to really get a bit more utility out of that space. So we actually feel like having this larger space will give you a lot of benefit. I know it's definitely a cost question for you to think about, but we saw that in addition to giving you a lot more flexibility for that flat-floor space, we thought that it was the kind of room that you build that kind of space, and it'll get used for all kinds of things that you never thought about before. So our experience has been you build a great room, and people will really cherish it and use it forever. The other thing that's kind of starting to work really well, we think, is the composition of that room. This is kind of a cutaway section through it, and you get to sort of sense the nature of the scale of that and the proportions of the height to the length and the depth. And we feel like this is just going to be a really well-functioning space for those kinds of activities. And then a section-
Excuse me, did we do any rendition of the elimination of the community room, which was spoken about last time? No, I'm talking about, we also mentioned not having a separate community room, just getting rid of it completely. And I thought we were going to see what that, some ideas of what it would look like if we just had the council chamber, not the dual purpose, but just a council chamber, and then we had the restroom issue, but-
Councilmember Gardner, this is schematic design, and it involves the design envisioned within the EIR. So I think that's a fair question and something the council can continue to discuss and maybe look at that within design development. But for the context of today and the EIR, which envisions a community room, we believed it was important to portray the community room here in these designs itself for tonight.
Isn't that view the smaller one?
No, actually, Don, that's the larger one. The smaller one is actually one bay shorter than this, so it's basically two bays plus the kind of presentation wall. Continuing on, a couple of views cut the other direction, kind of across the space to start to get at the idea of how the pre-function space, which is actually outdoor covered space, would work to have, you know, events that might span both spaces. And we thought that was kind of a nice relationship between these two. And starting to get into a bit more detail about the kind of character of the space for the council chamber and what that space starts to feel like as we're developing it. A lot of questions have been raised over the course of these months about what the nature of the sale is going to be, and it's gone through some iterations of form and height and material and texture and color and all kinds of things. And we still think it's a really important signature element to your building and also possibly becomes maybe your kind of iconic image for the city. So we think it's kind of really an important element, and we're happy with the way it's been evolving, you know, under the constraints of staying under the view plane and finding, you know, suitable materials that are durable and will hold up over time. We think we've found a good track record material that's, what's the name of the-
PTFE.
PTFE, yeah, I forget the initials of the fabric, but it's a coated fabric. These are some examples of that, kind of different kinds of configurations, different ways it's supported. But that's the idea of what this thing's going to feel like. Want to spend a minute talking about the library addition and a little bit about the program as we've developed it, working with the library staff and Cynthia, looking at a need for more expanded children's area program space, the idea of having a media lab space in there and additional conference room. There's some support spaces on this lower level. And then on the upper level, which now opens out to the civic green, contains some desired amenity kind of program elements, an espresso bar and a credit union with an ATM. Those are things that were identified in a survey of library customers about the kinds of things they'd like to see added, as well as a fair amount more space for people to sit and read or use their laptop. That seems to be the space that's in short supply for the library, and also the addition of some needed restrooms as well. And just a couple of quick images of the massing of that, that sits behind the gray there is the existing library. And the kind of side elevation of that, as you see it from Avocado, and what it starts to feel like as it relates to the city hall building itself, kind of an outdoor seating space that's part of an extension of that library entry pavilion. And seeing it in section to understand that the ground floor of the library now kind of reaches up and has this new entry zone on the second floor facing the civic green and what it's kind of, how that space starts to feel as you link those together and the extension of the existing stair that's in there. We have this parking structure that we've talked a lot about, about how many cars it has and how it feels and how it fits, how it relates to MacArthur, and stays below kind of your notice as you're driving along MacArthur. But then on the civic green side, it becomes kind of the fourth wall of that courtyard and the idea of having it become a kind of a green element or becomes part of the landscape was a way that we've addressed how that feels in that space. The north and south elevations, as you enter into it from either side, and those elements that screen that from view, these kind of vertical metal elements that help screen the oblique views from the uphill neighborhoods and from MacArthur. The red arrows on the screen show you that there's, you know, two, you can enter into the garage at both ends, both from the library parking lot expansion and from the Farallon entrance to the site, and just the upper floors of that. Couple views of the conception of the pedestrian bridge crossing San Miguel, what that starts to feel like. We like the idea that this thing can actually kind of help you set up a really wonderful view to the horizon, kind of over top of the city hall, and you see that in the distance, and what it feels like as it crosses over San Miguel and looking back towards the north parcel and the stair and elevator that anchor it on the Central Park. So we have this animation here that will help some of those 2D drawings make a little bit more sense. Now, heading down towards MacArthur, the garage is tucked behind that berm below retaining wall, see the existing library with its proposed addition. And spinning around now, you're looking back up the civic green towards the park, and now coming down Avocado, you see those balconies that punctuate that facade on the right and the council chamber, and kind of how that really develops when you see the landscape The entry-arrival sequence. In the civic green, we also wanted to show you kind of the arrival elevation of the garage. And now in the civic green, now you're in that kind of sheltered exterior circulation And now looking back towards the park. I did want to say just really briefly that all throughout our design process, we've been thinking hard about kind of appropriate environmental strategies, both, you know, just in the general thinking about doing a building that consumes less energy and is energy efficient, comfortable for occupants and so forth. And also with the goal of doing a LEED certified building, the goal that's been established for the project is certification at the silver level. And so we've been going through a lot of detail with our engineering team and with the city about which particular elements of the LEED list we would be incorporating into the design. And just to kind of cut to the chase, the chart at the bottom there shows the total possible points that are achievable within LEED is, I think it's 69 total points. And the different colors have to do with the points that we've achieved in the blue, the green being likely points that we're going to achieve, yellow being possible, orange being unlikely and gray meaning not achievable. And just in the big picture, the building is tracking on per the goal of doing a silver building. We're actually fairly close to gold, but it would require a couple of points to kind of work out for us to get there. I think we feel pretty comfortable that we'll be able to meet the request to get it to silver at this point in time. So I'm going to actually turn this over now to Dave.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. Welcome here, some comments by the council as well as, Mr. Mayor, at some point you'll want to formally open a public hearing on the certification of the final EIR. And if you'd like to take it in that order, going to the EIR next before questions, I'll have our staff member Jaime Maria come up and introduce briefly the EIR, but I'll defer to the-
Why don't we do that, then we'll get all the stuff out of the way.
So with that, I believe Jaime's here, behind me there. Jaime has worked hard on this with our consultants, so thanks, Jaime.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. As Dave Kiff noted prior to taking action on the schematic design plans- The city council must first review, consider and certify the final environmental impact report that was prepared for the project. The city contracted with LSA Associates, an environmental consulting firm, to prepare the initial study and draft environmental impact report consistent with the California Environmental Quality Act. The first step of the process was the preparation of the initial study and distribution of the notice of preparation of the EIR on April 1st to public agencies, organizations and persons likely being interested in potential impacts of the project. We also held a public scoping meeting on April 22nd to solicit comments from interested parties regarding the environmental issues that should be addressed in the EIR. Based on those comments and input received, LSA prepared a detailed and comprehensive draft environmental impact report describing the project and the environmental impacts that could potentially result from the project. Specific mitigation measures have been included to reduce the potentially significant impacts to a less than significant level, with the exception of two impacts related to short-term construction air quality and global climate change. The draft EIR was circulated for a 45-day public review period, which concluded on October 15th. The city received a total of 14 comment letters. LSA and staff have prepared full and complete responses to each of those comments received. Therefore, staff is recommending that the council adopt and certify the final EIR for the project as complete and adequate. The proposed final EIR is comprised of three volumes. Volume one is the revised draft environmental impact report, which includes minor corrections and clarifications to the original draft EIR. Volume two is the technical appendices and volume three is the response to comments. Draft resolution for the certification of the final EIR includes the required sequel findings and statement of facts and a mitigation monitoring and reporting program. Also, because the project results in two environmental impacts that cannot be less to a less than significant level and there are no feasible project alternatives or mitigation measures that would mitigate or substantially lessen these impacts, the council will need to adopt a statement of overriding considerations, finding that the benefits of the project outweigh these impacts. Drafted statement of overriding considerations has been prepared for the council and included in your staff report. So that concludes my portion of the presentation. I would like to note that Nicole Dubois from LSA is in attendance tonight, as well as LSA's biologist, cultural specialist, air quality noise and water quality specialist, as well as Mike Erickson from RBF, the firm that prepared the traffic analysis. And we also have Nicole Dubois, sorry, Jennifer Holman from Whitmanley, the outside counsel that assisted with the project.
Okay, thank you, Jaime. Okay, at this time, I think I'd entertain any comments or questions the council has of staff before we open this for public comment.
I do have a couple of questions. One is about whether it's open space or not open space. It seems like even within the document, it's contradicting itself. If you look at our general plan, it says that that whole area from the library on is open space. It's green. But then, and when this is pointed out, it says, no, it's, part of it says, well, part of the library will be open space, but part of it won't be, and I'm totally confused. So is it open space and we are going to change it or is it not?
Have Jaime answer that question.
Sorry about that, I should have clarified. When Measure B was passed, the city processed a general plan amendment redesignating the portion where the city hall facilities are to be located to public facilities use. The previous general plan designation was open space. However, the city did not change the zoning on that portion.
Thank you, that clarifies it for me. And also, I think this is going to come up and I don't need it answered now, but this, two questions that came up in the, particularly in the public comments, which is the idea that, I think Jan Van Der Sluit's letter was fairly astute in that just because the NCCP says one thing and our general plan says another, that doesn't, the NCCP doesn't necessarily override the general plan. So I think we have some issues there with policies. And I have some, just details that I can add at the end where I think we need some language changes, but I don't need to go into those now.
Okay, and Councilman Curry?
Yeah, David, just to be clear, the potential, the EIR approved sort of a total, you know, sort of fully built project to the extent that we come back with value engineering or phasing or other things like that, we're fully within our ability to do that after adopting this. So everybody's clear about that.
That's correct, Mayor Protem Curry. The intent of tonight's hearing was to look at the full project as analyzed by the EIR, notwithstanding some discussions that your council has had as we enter the next phase to look at various value engineering opportunities.
And then just for the record, and particularly for our friends at the Register, it's unlikely that we will in fact host cocktail parties at city hall.
Think how much happier our meetings would be, though.
Councilman Hen.
Yes, I do understand that this is an EIR and we do need to improve the concept, but this issue of the meeting room, of the community room, is of significance in the timeline here, not necessarily tonight, but I think sometime very soon, we're going to have to come to a conclusion about that, whether there is one and if there is, what's the size and configuration of it. Because pretty soon, you know, we're going to be so far down the path on schematic design, if we do decide to change course, it's going to waste a lot of money. So do we have a view of how soon we might be getting to that discussion of the community room? It seems to be the largest un-concluded issue, I think, before us, so.
Councilmember Webb, I would encourage you while we have the architects, sorry, councilmember Hen, I guess it's not that late even.
I don't have a beard.
I would encourage you, because we do have the architects here, to have that dialogue, if not within a few moments, maybe as you address more of the EIR issues, because we've, the building committee has discussed this with them and I think they're prepared to show you the pros and cons of various alternatives, as well as, I think, councilmember Gardner will feel free to ask her question about what would this look like if it wasn't there. So I think those are fair questions to ask tonight. If you don't wish to come to a conclusion tonight, we really need to make a conclusion fairly quickly, because you're right, as we enter the design development phase, changes get more expensive, because you start to do the wiring, the HVAC, all the kinds of support systems that support a certain size building and a certain size room.
Well, there's actually two issues. There's that and there's the EOC and the, in the statement that Mr. Kiff put in the staff report on reaching the target goal on the price of the city hall, the building committee going through and doing the value engineering assumed that we would have a smaller community meeting room and that the EOC would be combined in the basement area. Now, that was strictly part of the value engineering part of it, to get the number to where we thought we wanted to be. But as Dave said, the sooner we talk about this, the better. Councilman Daigle.
In terms of your statement of overriding consideration, that being that which cannot be mitigated, what are your, kind of your key elements to that?
I'm sorry, councilmember.
Well, for the public's purpose, what would be the key elements of your statement of overriding consideration?
Probably better for staff to address that particular issue.
Jaime.
The draft, the statement of overriding considerations is included in Exhibit A of the resolution adopting the schematic design plan. There's a number of public benefits that were addressed. There's a total of 12 different public benefits. Primarily, it's implementation of the voter's approval of Measure B to build the city hall at the proposed location, as well as incorporating the city hall into an overall civic center. That would benefit the community's needs, the public customers, and providing a new public park. There's a number of project objectives that were included in the EIR. The public benefits would meet each of those objectives. The proposed project will include the civic green, which is intended to provide space for community functions. It'll include the development of 14.3 acre park, which consists of different components of the park, including the dog park, the meadows, preserving the wetlands, pedestrian over crossing to connect the two portions of the park. The project will include the construction of needed transportation and infrastructure improvements, which include the widening of San Miguel and related intersection improvements. The project would include the construction of the EOC and include the expansion of the library, which has been shown to be a much-needed component for the library. But that's a brief summary. It also provides sustainable features into the design of city hall as well.
Well, that's a very good list, thank you.
Thank you.
Question, Dr. Van Der Sluit had created, had, he didn't create, but had created an alternative plan for landscaping, which was going to be presented and discussed. Was that ever, did that meeting take place?
Councilmember Gardner, the, Dr. Van Der Sluit and a couple of other folks, including Laura Curran and Rick Katzmeyer, as well as Mike Evans, came to meet with Sarah and her group and the design team twice now. Actually, certainly the second time it was just Laura and Rick, I believe. And maybe Laura can comment on those discussions. Sorry, Sarah can comment on those discussions.
I can also comment on, yes, we did and we received a plan as well as a plant list. We've incorporated some of that input and we had a meeting this afternoon to talk about the direction that was received well. I'm sure people will speak more about that themselves, but I think the input wasn't taken literal, in terms of this, we took it exactly, but it informed the design of the planting of the project.
Does it, these alterations, does that somewhat eliminate the amount of landscape that we're scraping or is it about the same?
No, let me show you a quick graphic. Is this my show behind here, Greg? Sorry, can you run your machine? I have a graphic that I can show you, but basically because of the site, which has a wetland in the middle of it, it's relatively narrow and where neither of the slopes of either Avocado or MacArthur are ADA compliant for their sidewalks right now, you couldn't build them. So to get a path through there that would be ADA compliant and to do all the other grading that we need to do, what you're looking at here is this area in black is places where we have undisturbed land. All of the blue is where we have new grading. And we're required to do that really to get a network of pathways through here that are ADA compliant, missing the cultural site, missing the wetland and fitting within the boundaries. And so in our first meeting with the group about the LSA documented existing biological plant communities, everyone agreed and it was understood and the landscape architect in particular understood why we needed to do this. And the discussion quickly shifted from, okay, well, what are you putting back as a discussion, rather than why are you disturbing as much as you're disturbing? Sure.
Okay, any other questions from council? Okay, saying none, I'll open it for public comment. How many people are going to want to talk tonight? Okay, normally we'd limit it to three minutes, but I'm going to ask you to try and keep your comments brief when you come up and we won't put that limit on unless it starts going on too long. Five. I'd ask you, we're going to take testimony on the schematic design and then on the environmental impact report. If you're going to speak on the environmental impact report, it's most helpful to us if you're very specific as far as the environmental impact or effect that you're addressing. And the more concise and the more direct you can be in your comments, the more you'll help us in reaching a decision tonight. So with that, I'll invite the first speaker to come forward and state their name for the record.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm Deborah Allen, I live in Harborview Hills in Corona del Mar. I want to thank you, thank the council for its commitment to the community, its commitment to making this design as community-friendly as it can be. And I actually was only going to say that. There's something that came up in the pictures tonight. It may seem like a minor point to you, but I can assure you, having lived in a view community for 35 years, it's a very, very important point. And that is the palm trees that have now permeated this site. You have a commitment to protect the view plane. Palm trees cannot be trimmed. Palm trees are an absolute serious problem tree in a view community, because they can't be trimmed, because they have to be removed when they pierce the view plane. And as a matter of fact, if we could go back to the picture that was up there just a few minutes ago, the one of the, can we do that? Can we show the one?
I think it's the one in the entry.
You can see, the beginning one, the first one. You can see that the, in the picture, the palm trees are already over the top of the height of the buildings, which means that they pierced the view plane before they're, even when they're first planted. And I think it's important to remember that the Irvine Company gave the city this parcel because it was constrained by the view plane. It couldn't be developed like their other parcels and therefore it was a good piece of property to give the city in exchange for the EOC agreement. You took it subject to the view plane. The view plane has been there since the 1960s. And I know you've committed to respect it and those palm trees are not going to respect it. I can also tell you that the palm trees at the entrance to Newport Center, the ones on the corner of Pacific Coast Highway and Newport Center Drive, when those were put in by the Irvine Company- in by the Irvine Company, they agreed that if and when those palm trees ever pierced the view plane, they would dig them out and replace them. Now, they have a, you know, a financial ability to do that, and obviously, they've kept that commitment for all these years. But in any event, I would be happy to work with the architects as the time goes by, but I think this is something that may have just kind of slipped through the cracks, but it can be a very, very serious problem. I can assure you that the palm trees in Irvine Terrace Park are a constant problem for the view communities uphill of them, and this will be as well. And it also will be a problem, of course, with the public views. So with that, I look forward to working with the architects and landscape architects, and coming up with something else that we can trim, that would still maintain, you know, the integrity of their design, or maybe very short trees. But thank you very much.
Thank you.[663.43][663.43](applause)
Good evening, council. My name is Jim Warren, and I live also in this view community. And there's a couple of things that I'd like to point out. As we worked our way through this process, and I've been pretty much involved in it for three years, we went from what was to be an open-space area and to building a city hall. And the more we see on the design committee, the more and more trees that we see throughout the entire project. And one of the things that was always constant was the people who did not live in Newport Beach, but traveled on MacArthur, used to love to come over the hill and see the view of the ocean as they came over the top of the hill. So it was, you know, very entertaining to everyone. But with the addition of all of the trees in the park, and then now the construction of the city hall, and now we've added the library to it, one of the things that we always talk about is the view plane, but the people who live above this not only have to worry about the view plane, but we look down on this thing. And it's turned into such a huge project now, with the roofs of the city hall, with the parking structure, with the addition of the library. From up above, it looks like a giant campus, or a shopping center, or something like that. And we keep hearing this saying, let's make our decisions now, because it'll be cheaper. Well, I totally disagree. The way the economy and everything is now, maybe we ought to just slow down a little bit and get exactly what we want, and I think we might find that to be cheaper. And so, you know, I do hope that you consider this seriously as a council. I think we've worked real hard to try to get everything right, but it's just sort of turned into a runaway freight train. And I don't think it was intended to be that in the first place. So, you know, I do hope that you help and make good decisions for the city, but keep this in mind, that it's just not a view plane, but it's turned into a large, large center that we're all looking down upon, and I don't think it was intended to be that way. Thank you.
Thank you.[785.69][785.69](applause) Next speaker.
Good evening. My name is Edward Lund. I'm a resident of Corona del Mar for 40 years, and I'm interested in the EOC. My uncle Reggie was in the San Francisco earthquake, and I was in Liverpool during a blitz of seven days. Pre-planning is essential. They say 20/20 vision is good, but we have an opportunity to have future vision, and the integrity of the EOC is very, very important. And if it's built to government standards, there is a possibility, I think it's more than a possibility, of government assistance on the cost of that. Please get back to the EOC and make sure it's there.
Thank you.[852.51][852.51](applause) Next speaker, please.
Pardon the stumbling, but I just got a new titanium knee.[872.16][872.16](laughter)
Sounds pretty valuable.
My name is Eugene Hadley. They call me Dean Widerfriendly. And I would like to say a couple of things about the EOC also. Emergency communications is absolutely essential, and it needs to be built so that it has access after the emergency happens. Our biggest problem here, by way of emergency, or the largest expectation, is that we'd have an earthquake. We happen to be right on the Newport-Inglewood Fault, a major fault in a class like the San Andreas Fault. It was responsible for the failure of the new veterans' hospital in Sandy Valley a few years ago. Okay? And a good many things can happen that are really dangerous, and I think that the people don't understand, perhaps, what all is involved in that. So I would like to -- I will give you a report here, but this was an earthquake planning scenario study that was done. Communications within 25 miles of the fault zone, this assumes we have an earthquake seven, okay? Within 25 miles of the fault zone, telephone lines designated for essential services are 25% usable for the first day, 50% the second day, 75% usable at the end of the third day, and the availability of telephone communications for the public is significantly lower. Electric power facilities, five power plants, Harbor, Long Beach, Alameda, Huntington Beach, are shut down for more than three days. A post-earthquake inspection of the San Onofre Nuclear Plant indicates no damage. Five major transmission substations in the Culver City Compton area are out of service for more than three days, making it difficult to reroute the power. Three major substations serving coastal Orange County are out of service for more than three days, making it difficult to reroute the power in the area. Water supply is reduced to half. The first day will return to normal in a week. Areas southwest of the fault zone, from Huntington Beach to Inglewood, must rely on local storage and tank trucks for drinking water. Wastewater, principal treatment plants in Los Angeles County, Del Segundo, and Carson, are damaged to operate at less than 50% capacity. The main Orange County plant is in the fault north of Newport Beach, severely damaged, would be inoperable for several months. Main wastewater lines in the Carson Treatment Plant in North Hangueral Valley and East Long Beach are heavily damaged in the fault crossing between Compton and Long Beach. Damage and lack of fresh water for treatment of electrical power for pumping result in sewage flowing into soils, channels, and streets, contaminating the groundwater and the coastline, and they go on. This was a very thorough study. And the thing that I would like to point out is that the operating center to maintain communications, to get the thing going after the event has happened, depends upon the emergency operating center. And the EOC, in order to be classed as an EOC with FEMA, must meet FEMA standards. And the kind of structure I see here is not it. What we have here is no shear strength in the lower walls, okay? And so we need to have the EOC built to FEMA standards, so that if there is an earthquake, it's still there, ready to use after the earthquake is over. And when last week I was here, and you said you're going to put it below the library, I could visualize that huge pile of books down on top of this place where we're supposed to be operating to maintain communications and keep things going. 9/11 isn't going to work. It's going to be out. Your cellphones are going to be out. It's a serious thing. So why not build the EOC to FEMA regulations, and then later on, if you need some more money from the federal government, at least you're qualified, and you can get the money from them. Costa Mesa is registered with FEMA, so is Huntington Beach. Why isn't Newport Beach? And we should have a good place when you're doing a beautiful facility like this, spending the money, spending the time, trying to do it right. Let's do it right by having an emergency operating base that is functional after the event. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Thank you, Mayor Selich. My name is Debbie Stevens. I'm a resident of Corona del Mar. I'd like to thank you guys for protecting the view planes. I do continue to appreciate that. I'll ditto Debbie Allen's comments about the palm trees, but also some of the other trees, because they're looking at pine trees and that kind of stuff, and they have the potential to grow into the view plane kind of quickly as well. One thing I did want to ask, mitigation measures regarding light and glare. A mitigation measure was suggested that would prevent parking on the top of the structure during evening hours. And it kind of made sense. It's a very easy way to reduce light and glare impacts without, you know, doing anything really sophisticated, but just to keep people from parking up there. And it would be mostly at nighttime when, you know, when the city hall wouldn't be open. And in the response to comments, it says something to the effect that that will be forwarded on to the decision-makers. And I just kind of would like to know if that's part of the final EIR. Like Counselman Hen, I didn't have time to read 3,000 pages of the final EIR, so I apologize for that. And then also suggests that the community -- I haven't looked at the mitigation monitoring plan, but would suggest that some of the community members be involved with that, because some of us would be pretty willing to make sure that those get imposed, so thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
It's difficult to follow the gentleman talking about the EOC when I'm going to get up here and talk about something that doesn't seem anywhere near as important, but it's important to, I think, the people of the city of Newport Beach, as well as the public. I want to do the same thing that the other people have done, because I think it's important, because I've attended so many of the meetings, as most of you know, and other people in the audience know, that I've attended all the design committee meetings, most of the city council meetings, things of that nature, whatever I can, to try and go through this. And I think the city council has done a great job. You've given the correct direction over and over again. Dave Kiff's given the correct direction over and over again, and yet we still see these concept drawings. And I know they're concept drawings. They're supposed to make the building look pretty, and so they put trees and pretty plants and all different colors around. I mean, they put water out there in the wetlands. I've walked on that project more times than anybody else has, and there's no water up there. I mean, the only way you're going to get any water up there is if you spring a leak when you're digging the hole, and you can put the pump down there. Instead of pumping it into the sewage system, you can pump it up there into the wetlands. But the thing I want to emphasize for the people watching this at home now is that tonight, the thing that the staff report says, it says on page 16, "We're going to protect and enhance public views of the ocean harbor from MacArthur Boulevard by maintaining the existing site plane above the proposed project site and providing lookouts in the park plan." That means trees aren't going to get in the way. Next thing is, it says on page seven, that the proposed civic center would be located in the area regulated by the site plane, while all the buildings in the civic center have been designed to maintain a height below the site plane. The current design complies entirely with the site plane height limitation, and no exemption from the site plane height limitations in PC 27 are necessary. That's on page seven. So I want to thank the city council. I want to thank Mr. Kiff, who's worked so hard on this project, and everybody else who's worked on it. I would only request that so people in the neighborhoods, and also people who are concerned about all the views down there, don't get heart attacks, that when they prepare these concept drawings, that they knock down the size of those palm trees, and they knock down the size of those other trees, because they're going to pierce the view plane, and immediately they're going to have to be removed. So thank you very much for your time and all your work on this project.
Thank you.[1405.32][1405.32](applause)
Hello, I'm Denise Woltmath, and I'm a Harborview Hills resident and a resident of Corona del Mar. And the first thing I want to echo is just the thanks for this process, and the thanks for working with the neighborhood and listening to our understanding and our concerns. Appreciate that a great deal. There's only three things that I want to briefly point out. Trees, I think that's been adequately addressed so far, and just kind of what we saw when we came here tonight, and we didn't expect to see in terms of trees that could encroach in terms of the view plane. The second area really was considering in terms of lighting and mitigation of lighting. I will tell you that I hosted a party at my house on October 10th, and all of a sudden, it's a Saturday night, view was great, everything looked -- everybody enjoyed it. All of a sudden, about 10 o'clock, 11 o'clock at night, the lights came on in the library. I really don't know why that happened. But those are the kinds of things that do happen, and in fact, we would really like to have mitigation of any lighting like that. And the last thing I just wanted to bring to your attention is the noise, and the noise during the construction. I think that during the EIR, it was said that it wouldn't be any significant impact. I just can't imagine that that would be the case. So anything that could be done to look more closely at that issue, I'd appreciate. So thank you so much for your time, and I appreciate your attention to this.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Selich, council members and staff. My name is Wendy Brooks. I'm a resident of Newport Beach. I, too, want to thank you. I'm so excited about this project. I think it's going to be just incredible. I'm also aware that costs have escalated beyond what you initially anticipated, and that you need to look for opportunities to decrease those costs. However, I must admit that I literally became ill when I heard there was a chance that one way to accomplish that goal would be to possibly eliminate the community room. As it stands today, the number of seats the library community room holds is 225. We have already experienced the many problems which we've encountered over the years, because it can't accommodate the necessary number of people. A space for a significant number of citizens to gather in a building that belongs to the residents is imperative. The library space cannot accommodate more than 225 people, and it has already been proven to be inadequate. I urge you to build the larger community room for citizen use. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. My name is Mary Barrett Blake, and I've lived here since 1938, and I'm absolutely thrilled with the city hall and all the hard work all of you, the architectural committee, the architect, the landscape architect, have put into this. It's absolutely fabulous. But I'm here to address the same issue, the community room, because many times, I've wanted to attend things at the library, speakers, authors. I go to meetings there for the EOC sailing club, and there isn't adequate room. Many times, I can't get the ticket, because they're sold out the day that they go out to the public. And so I think, Nancy, if we eliminate that room, we're really going to regret it very quickly. And it's something that I just can't imagine. I mean, you could even have major Girl Scout, Boy Scout events there. It could just be used for so many things, and I just don't think we should even consider eliminating that room. So thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker? Anyone else?
Councilmembers and staff, my name is Laura Curran. I live in Corona del Mar. So first of all, Barry, if you'd like to see the wetlands and the water, I'd be happy to take you out and show them to you. Since Jan's not here to do it, the invitation's open. But bring your boots. So Jan Van Der Slut and I got to know each other through multiple projects in Newport Beach, and for those of you who have heard his name mentioned tonight, I'm going to take that opportunity, too. The last project that Jan and I worked on was understanding the site plans for Civic Center Park, and we walked the site several times, along with several members of council and Mike Evans of Tree of Life Nursery. And we had some concerns, and I want to bring them up, because I read ERs on a regular basis as part of EQAC, and these are part of a theme that's going through the ERs. As Jan commented in his letter, the EIR didn't include a plant pallet, so it was difficult to assess if the schematic approach would follow the general plan guidance to be protective of coastal sage scrub. Also, if the plant pallet would address the park design guidelines of April 2009 to be reflective of the region's national habitats. Further, in parts, it stated that the soil was poor for supporting plantings, though there is extensive coastal sage scrub habitat. It also called for extensive grading of the site, as Nancy referenced. And I voiced similar concerns in my letter to EQAC. Now, these, you know, and then when we looked at the Sunset Ridge EIR, there were also assumptions made about the way the park would be managed, but there were not necessarily indications of specifics. So I have a concern, just in general, when the biological work is done, that without a plant pallet, it's hard to really comment with any certainty about what's actually planned. It's a general... It's a general comment. So, and the other concern is that it takes a lot of personal time, but also staff and council time, to respond to these. Now, it also, in this case, created an opportunity because, as Dave confirmed, we met with Sarah Cool and the team, and I want to thank Dave for arranging that. And so based on that discussion, we did cover several of the issues like soil condition. And it turns out that though there's a lot of salinity in the soil, there's also a lot of good value in that soil, and the team talked along with Mike Evans about ways to harvest that soil and reuse it. That will be very positive on the site. We also talked about the need for grading and ways to adjust for that, and some of the important reasons that there will be grading, but again, how that ties to the soil condition. And I just ask you, as we go forward and we specify for EIR preparation, that we ask to have complete information on these topics so that we really can look at them and understand them in the EIR and put our questions forward in that manner. At the same time, the discussions that we've had so far have been very productive, and it appears that we're moving in a direction which extensively integrates the local plant communities, such as the coastal sage scrub, and keeps those values, such as productive soil, in place. I look forward to the next step, the design phase, and to a continued dialogue, and even more to a place which enables the visitors and the residents and people in our town to experience the local natural habitats and the beauty, which my friend Jan Van Der Sluit dedicated his life to. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Selig and council members. There are a myriad of issues.
Say your name, please.
I'm sorry. David Brandmeyer, resident of Newport Beach, chairman of the Board of a Corporation here in Newport Beach, and also president of the Church Council for Newport Harbor Lutheran, all of which tie into why I'm here. We're looking at a building that's going to be here for 100 years, and you've done a tremendous job of looking at conflicting interests, looking at the budgetary constraints, and the myriad of other issues that arise in a community of this size or in any organization. My concern is that in the next 100 years, the probability of us having an earthquake is substantial. They're saying in 33 years, a 99th percentile. If in fact, an EOC isn't functional after that point, there are going to be a lot of wondering why. To me, it's very simple. I think the architecture is incredibly important. It's beautiful, having the line of sight not penetrated, having all those other issues addressed. But in the core, in the belly of the beast, if you will, I recall from the last EOC event we had here in the city, which was the Operation Shakeout, I was there and I recalled two people that were there also here, from the council. That was without anything going wrong, how difficult it was. Imagine how difficult it's going to be if the other cities around us have their ability to communicate, the county has its ability to communicate, and we sit as an isolated, empty place of communication for three days is the projected outcome. In the Lutheran Church, we have an organization called I-LERT, where we bring in resources from outside the area, we're setting up communications throughout the area. The city's critical to have that communication. Fire and police, all those services, they're not going to have the ability to do the same thing. So please, while you're facing these final decisions, a hardened FEMA-class base is where we should start planning up from. Glass is beautiful to look through. I like the walls in my office to be glassed too, until they start shattering. So please, just in all these considerations and the conflicts you have to address, and I realize there are myriad, just sitting here, in a few minutes, how many we've heard. But remember, if there is no communications after an earthquake, and it's 30 years from now, nobody's going to be looking at you. They're going to be looking at each other, wondering what happened? How can we have this 100-year building that didn't plan for something we knew was going to happen? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any other speakers? Please step forward. Yeah, those who want to speak, if you want to move down to the front row, there's some empty seats here, then you'll be able to get up quicker. Right over here. Go ahead, sir.
Good evening, mayor and council. My name's Ed Stevens, Corona Del Mar. I want to express my gratitude, like everybody else, for the committee and the staff and council as well. I do believe we should make a part of this landscaping process. Any landscape engineer knows the size and height, the expectancy of any plant, so we should just put it in there that no plant that could ever grow higher than the height of the building should be used in the landscape design. Also, the little viewfinder telescope, put your quarter in, look at the ocean thing that they showed on there. I don't know the name that she used to describe that. That would also be above the view plane and might be intrusive if people marched around to look in that. But if they do decide to put it there, I would suggest putting it in the north side of the park, not in the south side of the park. But if you do put it in the south side, you should definitely make it so that people can't turn around and take a look into the houses while they're at that.[942.12][942.12](Laughter). And then I'd also like to thank you for having us on the early part of the agenda for this evening. This is the first time we've been in before by 11:30, so I want to thank you all for that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next speaker.
Good evening, mayor and council. I'm Ron Hendrickson. I live in the Port Streets. I always did want to see what Debbie and Barry were doing at night up there.[967.01][967.01](Laughter). Just a couple of comments to start out with. The coffee shop, not sure that's the right nomenclature, and the credit union space, I presume that those are going to be leased spaces, and if so, I would presume that some attempt would be made early on to determine who those tenants might be, and so you could programmatically determine what the proper size of the space ought to be, just a comment. With regard to the community room, it seems to me, I heard discussions at some of the meetings before, that someone was going to study and come up with a list of uses for the community room, and I just wonder if that has been done, because I think people tonight here have mentioned a number of potential uses, and I think if you sat down and really listed those uses, there would be a number of them, and I think it would be unfortunate to build a city hall without some additional space like that. And I just also wanted to note that I support what the council has done. I think you guys have done a great job in pushing this project along. I think we've had an outstanding design team, and I think now's the time to move ahead and try to get into this area where costs are still going to be low. I think that by utilizing bid items, you'll be able to have the ability to break out the costs if in fact they do run higher than what's anticipated, and that'll give you a lot of protection, I think. So I do believe that we have an outstanding project, and hopefully we can move ahead with it as quickly as possible. Thank you.
Thanks, Ron. Next speaker.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Nancy Moran Sanchez, and we've lived on Narcissus Avenue since 1979, and I'm here to talk about the EOC. The form that I'm passing around is just an example. It happens to be, all relate to me, but it's an example of what many other community volunteers, disaster volunteer volunteers have. And I'll be referring to that in my closing statements. In 1937, my grandparents took me down to San Pedro for the purpose of walking around on the cliffs of San Pedro to view the big fissures that were left from the earlier earthquake, which I think was in 1932, something like that. I was three years old, and I can remember looking down into those deep fissures, and I thought, if I fell in there, my grandma and grandpa could never get me out. And this is parallel to Newport Beach's need to have an EOC. So I am here today to ask you for your vote, your support for a hardened, dedicated EOC. We're not asking you to do everything. In the community volunteer response team, we are doing, we are prepared, we are, our task is to be prepared so that we can take care of ourselves, our family, and our neighbors. When the big one does hit, the city of Newport Beach will be reorganized through FEMA as a result of improvement, so the same things are not, same errors are not repeated as they were in Katrina, and be organized in the incident command system. And the people that will be in the EOC will of course be the chief of police, the fire chief, there will be the city manager, the city mayor, the city attorney, and possibly all of the city council people will be there because of the new organizational system that is used throughout the United States. Now, how do I know this? I know this because of all the classes that I have attended and the form that I gave you. If you, I've taken, lots of us, many of us have taken the classes that FEMA wants us to take. We do that on our own time, with our own money, pay the Red Cross fees for the instructions. And if you look to the lower right-hand corner of that form, you will see a mutual aid responder picture and certificate. Now, in order to receive that, all of those other certificates had to be completed. So you have to be very dedicated to do this, and we can't string it out and do it in two years. We have, we had to do this within a one-year period. The other certificate that is shown on here is the, from the FCC, it's, we learn to become ham radio operators.
You've got about 30 seconds left, ma'am.
Okay. If we don't have a really good EOC and the communications break down, then there are 40 of us within the city that will be able to use these. But these are pretty meager in a time of a big disaster. So I urge you to reconsider the EOC very seriously. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Hello, Mayor Selig and council members. My name is Mary Ann Soden. I'm a resident of Corona Del Mar. I live in the Harborview Hills neighborhood, and I just wanted to add my voice to the chorus of neighbors who thank you for really taking into consideration the residential neighborhood that will be across the street. I'm very hopeful that MacArthur will be a buffer for us. My family moved to Harborview Hills in 1961, and it's a fantastic neighborhood with beautiful views and a really quiet nature, and so I would ask you to please continue, as this process goes on, to think about our view plane. I mean, Debbie Allen, who saw the picture of a palm tree and thought that's an issue, to really be kind of preventative and proactive as you're planning, to really think about the traffic pattern and to insulate us as you can. And just to keep up the good work, your PowerPoints get more and more colorful and lovely with each passing meeting, and I look forward to the day that I can walk through the park and come to the council meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, council members, city staff, my name is Dale Cargill. I've lived in Newport Beach, Corona Del Mar, since 1971. And let's just cut to the chase. There is no EOC. It isn't an EOC unless it's built to FEMA standards. Now, it appears to me that there's some people that have their heads stuck in the sand, and I would caution them or enlighten them that when you stick your head in the sand, you have a very large part of your anatomy sticking up in the air.[1525.51][1525.51](Laughter). It is the city's fiduciary responsibility to do whatever they can for the safety and welfare of its citizens. You know, with, I know the budget routine, and I've been through it many times. I spent 40 years in the construction industry. You know, figures don't lie, but liars sure do figure. Now, I've just been looking at all these nice, pretty pictures that the architect presented. I saw an awful lot of areas where we could, we could build a half a dozen EOCs, build it properly and correctly. So I strongly urge you to please put the EOC back in the project. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next speaker, please.
Mr. Mayor, city council, city manager, I think you've been seeing me address.
Say your name, please.
Oh, I keep forgetting to do that. Gary Standard, Corona Del Mar. So it seems like about nine months ago, I believe this council and the city manager heard the concerns of citizens and changed course and considered building a EOC as part of the new Civic Center project. But the newest plan of not constructing a facility to FEMA standards means that we are way less than 50% of a viable solution. If it's not built to FEMA standards, it cannot be called an EOC under the Building Code, and I see tonight it's called a meeting room. And why are the findings and standards of FEMA being ignored? When we will most be reliant on a functioning EOC, probably a major earthquake, and we have one named after the city, or a fault, rather, that meeting room will not be usable or even safe to enter if it's not built to FEMA standards. A FEMA grant consideration requires an EOC to be built to essential standards as defined by the Building Code. When we will most be reliant on a functioning EOC, the proposed room in the basement may not be usable or even safe. Members of the council and the city manager have used the word "value engineering" over the last few weeks, as they try to reduce the cost of the Civic Center project. I asked this council, what is the value of lives saved and property damage minimized which a fast-acting and functioning EOC would mitigate? And how would this body explain why the city value engineered FEMA standards out of a room formerly called an EOC? In a major earthquake, Newport Beach will be totally self-reliant for days because of the lack of mutual aid from nearby cities and the county, as those jurisdictions would have suffered through the same seismic event. We're going to be an island to ourselves and to other states and the federal government responds. A FEMA-qualified EOC is eligible for FEMA grants, possibly up to $1 million. A non-approved EOC, a non-FEMA-approved EOC, will not be eligible for any grants, ever. The following cities have EOCs that are FEMA-approved: Huntington Beach, Dana Point, Ontario, Irvine, Costa Mesa, as well as the county of Orange, but not Newport Beach? A FEMA guidance report states, "Fully capable emergency operations facilities at the state and local levels are an essential element..." and local levels are an essential element of a comprehensive national emergency management system and are necessary to ensure continuity of operations and continuity of government." Why is Newport Beach shortchanging our citizens and endangering lives by not building an EOC to FEMA standards? Once again, a room not built to FEMA standards cannot be called an EOC. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. How many more people want to speak? Let's look, one more.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council, and staff. My name is Susie Cardilla. I'm a 30-year, 38-year resident of Newport Beach. I also want a hardened EOC. I saw a lot of beautiful slides tonight on a dog park, greenery, wetlands. I don't think any of those items are as important as our EOC. That's going to be our lifeline to the community. Please build it to FEMA standards. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I'll close the public hearing, and I think before we have council discussion on this, Sarah, could you comment on all the plant material and the considerations with the view plane and long-term maintenance and issues with it?
Yeah. Let me just see if I can get a picture back up here. The first thing I'd like to do is just clarify the framework under which we're working. I think the terminology for this is important to have straight. The legally prescribed view plane stops at Farallon. So from Farallon north, for the whole central parcel and for the piece north of that, it's not a legally prescribed plane. It's just about protecting views, which is something that we were told was important for public views coming off of MacArthur in particular, with views to the bay as well as to the water. And then also, understanding how this related to homeowners' views from the community above. So in terms of our consideration of doing that, if you go to the end of my show, sorry, I'll see if I can drive yours. We did a number of studies, and this is just one example, looking at what the opportunities were. And so this is as you drive along MacArthur to the south. These shots are taken about every 200 feet. You can really see how you don't have the view at the beginning. You have some very large buildings which block the view to your right, although you have the view in front of you. And then as you go down past sort of the wetland and meadow area, the view really opens up in front of you as well as to your right. And so in the consideration of where we put the pine forest at the north end, it was very much in relation to this series of views and in relation to those large buildings which are already blocking the view. So we believe we have addressed that such that we're not actually taking any view that isn't already blocked by something that is there in that northern area. Secondly, in the central area, we showed a number, I want to say five, large shade trees on the plan. And I can show you sort of a plan of that area because we thought it was important to have shade in the park in terms of usability and in terms of scale. Let me just pull the plan up of that. There it is. So you can count them, one, two, three, I guess there are six on this plan. Again, we believe we have located those in such a way that they line up with things that are already there, but we also think we're all going to be able to see this a lot better and more with certainty after the grading is done, because it doesn't relate to the grading that is there now. And we could reconfirm each of these if we needed to with a poll or something else that said, "Look, this really isn't going to block the view," and adjust the location so that we could both have the shade and the scale and avoid blocking views. So we're trying to do both of those. In the area that really we believe is the big, open, sort of aha view that comes across, it's coincident with this area, and that planting is very consistent with what is there now. As you get down to the area where we're talking about with the palms, I think that is the area where I would most appreciate people's concerns. We've actually been showing these the entire time I've ever presented this, and I had de facto thought that people were comfortable with, in a 360-degree view, there being small breaks in it, because we haven't had comments before. If that is a concern for these particular palms, we'd certainly be happy to look at it again.
Any questions, Sarah, on that?
I'd make a note, too, Sarah, you may want to, just to clarify, there is another slide that you have a number of large pine trees, and that's down low by the library. So just so the public realizes that, we've seen two shots of pines, one in the north park, one down low by the library.
Right. And so you have existing pines growing adjacent to the library. This is essentially at the same elevation with trees of the same height, so it seems that that would be acceptable.
Okay. Okay. And then just before we get to council discussion, just one other comment that was brought up. There was a comment on the no parking at night on the parking garage and how we dealt with that in the EIR.
Mayor Selich, that is a, was something you folks talked about and the design committee talked about as well. Actually, a resident suggested a concept where there be a gate on the upper level of the parking structure, and the gate and the use, in effect, controlled any lighting that was on the upper deck. And we thought that was a reasonable and appropriate solution, and that's what we've directed the architects to include in the design. It'd be, given the amount of folks that use City Hall, it's much heavier during the day than at night unless there was some type of special event. So I think that works well to control the use of the upper deck of the parking structure to minimize lighting. I'd make one more comment about lighting. One of the speakers mentioned, I think it was Denise, mentioned the library lighting as well as the City Hall lighting. And what, we do have a lighting example that we could show you if you had questions about it. And the example really shows the mitigation that's included in the building, which includes automatic blinds and dampeners that would actually decrease the amount of light from what's there today, because that library expansion and the library connection helps dampen that lighting, too. And I know the library director, I believe she's back there, I'm sure she's quite curious as to why the lights were going on at six, in an evening on a Saturday, and I know she'll look into that. Could have been janitorial, but we need to control that better. So as Greg's showing, this is the lighting display. As you watch this, you could see the majority of the lighting is coming from the streetlight standards. But Greg, if you had comments?
Well, yeah, that was, our survey was that the streetlights along MacArthur are actually the biggest source of glare intrusion from the neighboring streets above.
Can I run that one more time?
Yeah.
So this is coming down MacArthur, again, driving past the parking structure and the city halls in the distance. You're at a fairly high level on MacArthur. This would be if you were in a huge semi up in the cab.
It'd be a Hummer.
Yeah.
Oh, the mayor.
Always pick on me.
And then finally, Mr. Mayor, I think it would be appropriate as well to hear from the council. A number of speakers raised the question of the Emergency Operations Center, and we had had an extensive dialogue with the architect about various things. One of the things I asked them was, could you move the EOC into this basement level? And Greg, we may want to show a profile of that basement level again, because I wanted to make sure everybody knew where the "training room," quote-unquote, is proposed to be. Remember when we heard this item almost a year ago, the-
Well, Dave, if I can make a suggestion, I mean, it's a fine line between what we're talking about and FEMA standards, so maybe you could explain that a little bit.
It is, and thank you. That's kind of where I was going, that remember, if you wanted to officially call a facility an EOC, it has, the entirety of the building that it's in has to be built to those essential building standards. And that's what we were concerned about, especially relating to the cost of this overall facility. So the concept that we're looking at, and the concept I asked the question of, is, could you build this facility in the basement, and could you harden it to such an effect that it would have the same protection as a set aside, separate EOC, but be in another building, with the rest of the building not being to those standards? However, given that this brand-new building is built to the latest earthquake standards itself, the post-Northridge standards, so let me ask Greg or maybe Steve Chato to comment on that, because they've looked at it fairly extensively.
Yeah, in fact, I think I am going to have Steve come up, because he's done the most kind of digging into the details of this, and I think he can answer it better than I can.
Yeah, I'll try to keep this brief. Yeah, Steve Chato, Boland Swinski Jackson. There were a couple of things that we looked into that were important. One was the distinction between FEMA and the California code. So we actually found straight off that the California code does require this is an essential services building to be built at Level 4 construction. The rest of the building is actually being built to Level 3. So there is a difference right there in the code. The FEMA requirements actually are indebted to the code, so we actually wound up with this sort of odd situation about, a lot of EOCs descriptions are operational, not so much the building frame itself, although there is a component to that. So we found ourselves asking the question, or Dave was asking us the question, what about the facility we're building now as a new structure? Is it not being built to fairly decent standards? The important thing structurally we saw that was, code-wise, we actually are building to, the structural engineer will never give you a straight answer about what's the earthquake level, right? That's not how they actually do the calculation. But the design basis says that the building would be able to survive a 7.5. He would, that was, he'd give us that.
At the site.
If that were the, you're right, exactly. If the impact of the earthquake were right at the site, it would be a 7.5. At that point, you would then have a building that everyone could get out, it would have damage to it, it would still be able to function in some capacity. Going down from there, we went to more likely scenarios of six and a five, and they pointed out that at a six, this building would survive, minor structural damage, would have some architectural damage, but would remain functional. At a five, the building would actually maintain continuous operation. There would be no discernible change.
And Steve, you're talking specifically about the entirety of the city office building right now.
That's correct. So that's the entire, the entire building is being built to that standard. The structural engineer also noted that because this is in the basement, it is a concrete set of walls at that level. So in fact, with a minor bit of hardening at the ceiling of this, at the deck, between this level and the first level, that in fact, that lower level would in fact structurally be built to the level of an essential services building. It would happen to have a non-compliant building on top of it, which then becomes, that's an issue, right? Because it actually does need to be freestanding in order to fully claim that. But in practical terms, it has the use.
And you and I've had a discussion about, what if the upper building fails? What are the impacts to the lower building? And why don't you walk us through what the structural engineer told us about water?
Right. So from the structural perspective, we just answered structural. So the rest of the issue that was being brought up today, which is a really good point, is systems do get impacted. So when the EOC was shown separately, systems-wise, everything was going to the EOC first, then serving the rest of the site, meaning that if those connections got severed, you still had a connection to the EOC. In this proposal, the systems are now combined back together. So you actually have structural, or you have, I'm sorry, systems loops, mechanical and electrical and IT and otherwise, that don't have this piece separated out from the rest of the building. So in that case, if you have damage in another part of the building, it could actually affect this piece. So in terms of finding a zone of what can you do in here, we found that we can go part the way towards achieving the goals of an EOC in its strictest definition, but we're not able to actually recreate it in this spot.
Dave, what is the probability of a Level 4 earthquake versus a Level 3, or the Level 4 design versus the Level 3 design?
Well, the Level 4 is, there's a slight difference there. The Level 4 versus Level 3 is what you expect the condition of the building to be in at the time of the, right? So the numbers I was giving were for the Level 3. The Level 4 is, the important distinction there is, the Level 3 is allowed to sustain some damage, the Level 4 is not. The Level 4 is actually required to be fully operational after the major-
All right, then, but a 7.5 earthquake has a probability of something versus a 6 has another probability. Are you familiar with what those are?
I did ask some questions about that from the structural engineer, to try to get, and I couldn't, once again, they're slippery, you can't get the answers you quite like. But I did hear that for this particular area, it's not as likely as some areas that are not too far away from here. And the distinction he kept making was, you want to talk about the impact at this site. And he was saying that at this particular site, the numbers to actually hit a 7.5, just for reference, that 7.5 is a 500-year recurrence assumption. So anyway, in terms to get to why 7.5, that's the frequency with which it's expected to happen.
We do a little bit more follow-up, if you don't mind, Mr. Mayor. One of the things that the community, I think, came to you folks and to the design committee early on was, they wanted a setup, established, ready-to-roll Emergency Operations Center. And I, as city manager, ended up being the incident commander of these things, as well as having been fully gone through all the ICS training and a number of drills. So I take this very seriously. And when I look at this, and when I look at what could and should and in all likelihood would remain operational, with a setup, established room that had all the technology in it, all the computers ready to go, a generator that's within several feet of this facility, and listening again to Steve and Greg, I look at a, not the absolute worst-case scenario, because I don't think you can ever plan for that, but when you look at a serious seismic event, that this would survive, we would have electrical not far away. The one problem we might have is a little bit of water coming down from up above if some pipe broke in the building above us. And I'm not minimizing that, but what I'm saying is, these are the kinds of thoughts that went into this planning with the expectation that if you did build the building just a short bit away, and you had that large seismic event, I wonder, too, if it would even survive. It's right in the middle of a parking structure and then this building. If you had that big an event, could that actually damage the Level 4 building that we would have expected to survive? So yes, it's a calculation of risks and benefits, but that's the thinking that went through this presentation.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. If I can suggest this for the council, most of our comment tonight was on the community room and the EOC. Maybe we can discuss those two issues first and then migrate on to other issues. And maybe if we can come to a resolution on those two issues tonight, fine. If not, if we have to continue, and I would just admonish the council that we really need to do that sooner rather than later. So why don't we start with the community room and just see if we can reach some consensus there?
Well, I was just going to say that we've had a lot of people say, "Well, gee, the costs, you need to contain the costs." And then we, when we try to contain the costs, you have, everybody has their baby. We have very eloquent arguments for the EOC. We've had very eloquent arguments for the community room. We've got to have the park. The only thing we ever seem to be able to agree on is the pedestrian bridge.
It's because it's easy.
I guess, I mean, the sense of, if you build it, they will come, has been used, and I think the architect said that. Certainly, to build a room, a small community room, makes absolutely no sense to me. I mean, it seems like either we build something that has, offers you more than what the library is offering at this point, or forget it. Because to build us another one that just duplicates what we've already got and isn't big enough, really seems to be a waste of money.
Okay. Councilman, ahead.
Following on to those comments, my presumption is that in the scenario in which we would not build a community room as a part of the new Civic Center, we would have a budget line item of some size. I don't know what that is, several hundred thousand dollars probably at least, that would be spent on the friends' room to, first off, have seats that work, but secondly, also substantially upgrade its capability to act as a meeting room with audiovisual and perhaps satellite communication. I don't, you know, there's a whole array of things that you could think of that you might want to have access to. So that we would end up with a room that supports 225 guests, but very well, up to modern standards, today's standards. I remain- I remain still unconvinced about the programming need for a very large room. I understand that we do have capacity, sold-out events in the Friends Room. On the other hand, I don't think we should be building facilities here to the maximum possible capacity need. I just don't think we should do that. I don't think that's a smart thing to do as it relates to being fiscally responsible. And so, I agree with Nancy that, though, going to 150 size, what does that get you? I don't think that gets you anything because most of the arguments here about the community room have to do with having higher capacity than what we have with the Friends Room. And I still, when I looked at the programming use of the Friends Room, there was some amount of programming that appeared it was true, and I'm sure it is true, that we run into capacity constraints. But by and large, the programming utilization of that facility, even allowing for non-use on Sundays and holidays and this and that, looked to me like roughly 50%, maybe lower. And so, I remain unconvinced about the real need for such a large room. And when I think about enhancing the Friends Room and having a really beautiful plaza area instead of a community room right there next to the city hall chambers, I feel better about it.
Any other comments on the community room? Mayor Tim Curry?
Well, I think I share Councilmember Gardner and Councilmember Hen's view that building a small community room is not particularly beneficial. It should be pointed out that we have rooms at Newport Coast Community Center. We're going to shortly have a brand-new oasis facility where community meetings can be held. We'll have a new council chambers in the civic center where meetings can be held. It's yet to be determined what we're going to be with -- what we're going to do with this site. So, when you think about all of the various places in the city where you can host a community meeting, we have options. So, the issue that really we have to confront is that we have a total estimated package that's $140 million. That if it's going to be constructed within the confines of our policies and our facilities plan and the other things we need to do, needs to be $105 million. And that $35 million is going to require difficult program element cuts that all of us would like to see, but which nonetheless are going to have to be deferred or modified. As to the EOC, if we can strengthen and have a building within a building, that might be, I think, probably the most effective and efficient way to go. You know, this whole conversation began by people wanting to move the EOC that we currently have at the police facility, which is hardened, which does have helicopter access to it. It's in a building that's, I believe, completely compliant with the standards, at least as they applied when the building was built, and which is going to be rebuilt to whatever standards there at the time that we rebuild it, and is walkable from this site here. Because it was thought that we wanted to have people more approximate than that 25, 30-minute walk that they would have to go to go to the police facility. So, I think we have options on the EOC as well that say that we can find a way to get this done and do it in a way that preserves our ability to respond to emergencies without having to build a separate standalone building.
Councilman Webb?
Well, I'm going to take a slightly different approach on the community room. During the time I was with the city, I know that one of the difficult things that we always had is we didn't have anywhere in this city hall, other than the city council chambers, where we could have public meetings of over 100 people attending. And we got by. We went up to Newport Harbor a couple of times. There are a few other places around the community. But I strongly feel that part of the city hall experience needs to also have a community room. And so, I'm not supporting necessarily the larger one. I think that the one that was originally presented at the, I believe it's 250 seats? Is that correct?
150.
150, 150 seats. Okay, the small one. 150 seats is probably beneficial to the overall operations without having to constantly try to double-book the -- or fight for the room in the library. I think that it's important for this large of a city hall facility to also have a room that can set up for public meetings. Also, this acts as a spillover room to where we could work out video equipment to where if we had very large public hearings at the city council chambers, this could be a spillover area where people could watch on TV what was going on and then move over to the city hall chambers and comment. So, that I just think that would greatly detract from the overall usability of our facility not to have a separate community room. Plus, I think from our value engineering, we can squeeze that in the 105 million.
Councilman Diggle?
Well, if you can squeeze it within 105 million, I can go for it. I think it does -- you know, I think we need to approach this not only as something that serves governmental functions, but also, you know, that the community also believes that some of their space needs are being addressed.
Councilman Rosansky?
I also would, I guess, support the smaller version of the community room. I think at this point in time that we're so far down the road here with this design that, I mean, we create other problems if we start pulling it out. And although I know the library folks have expressed a need for a larger facility, you know, I don't think you'd ever build it big enough and you'd always find another event that would fill it. So, we kind of have to live within our budget, serve the basic needs, I think, and go with that. And I do think it will be an asset for the community to have a place to meet at city hall directly. So, I'm in favor. And I think we will stay within that $105 million budget, so I'm confident of that.
Well, Councilman Curry wanted to say something.
Well, just real quick, staying within $105 million solves a multitude of issues. So, if we can do that, you know, let's get as much as we can within $105 million. That's a $35 million reduction, and that's not going to be easy to do. And then just one final comment on the trees because the question was asked, let's have some feedback on the trees. And I think now is not the time to break faith with the community on the view issues where we're something as relatively minor as palm trees. Let's find a way to have landscaping that protects the view plane, that keeps faith with the citizens, and continues the goodwill that's been fostered by the process up to now. While we don't need to be acute and tricky about stuff that people are going to object to. And I think the consultants have done a good job, by the way, in trying to be responsive to the community, and let's continue that.
Okay. Well, I would support the smaller community room also. I think that judge the value of this community room just based on how the Friends Room is used or not used, it really isn't the way to do it, that the city hall and the civic center we're building by itself generates a need, as Councilman Webb described, for a community room. So, I'm in support of going ahead with the community room. And that makes four of us, so that's the direction that we'll take. Next item is EOC. Who wants to jump in on that one? Councilman Hen?
Well, I still have a question or two about this EOC. You mentioned something about auxiliary power, UPC, uninterrupted power. It seems to me it's not -- you said something about it being close by. I'm not sure why we wouldn't have the ability to have uninterrupted power availability for that EOC. Isn't that not the case?
Can I clarify that?
Yes.
There's actually two pieces to it. There's UPS, which is the uninterrupted power supply, which would allow your computer systems not to do a hard crash.
Right.
And then there's a backup generator that comes in.
Correct.
That provides essential power to systems that we designate. And we size the generator appropriately to the loads that are required.
UPC usually gets you 30 to 60 minutes, something or two hours.
Actually, UPS, if you design it in tandem with a generator, is only designed to handle the switch-over that takes about a minute for the generator fire up and get up to voltage. So, you work those two things together. There's a transfer switch. We do have a generator indicated as part of the project. I think the ultimate load that we put on the generator is still kind of being debated, so that'll impact the size of this thing. But it is part of the project, and it's essential to have the thing work.
Yeah. So, we will have uninterrupted power to that EOC facility in the basement, right?
If that's where we designate it, yes.
And the level of that location is at the exact same level as the previously planned hardened EOC.
Correct.
Facility.
Craig, could you show that profile slide? Because you went through it fairly quickly in your presentation. Remember the one where you do see the level? I think that might help the public understand it as Mr. Hen notes.
Yeah, let me find that view.
Cut off your train of thought there, Mr. Hen. I apologize.
So, this is the south elevation of the whole complex with a section cutting through the centerpiece here, which is the basement portion of the library addition. And so, the civic green is up here, avocado is up here. The drive that gets down to the loading dock area comes in off avocado like so. And the level where the basement of the building is down here. So, yeah, it would be essentially at the same level as the first floor of your existing library.
And the same level as the originally planned EOC hardened facility?
That's correct.
Okay. So, that leaves communications, powered communications. Those are the two big things in a disaster here in terms of a facility being operable. Is it not possible to provide for independent communication to that so-called basement facility for communications?
I'd want to probably talk to our engineers, but I imagine something like that could be done. I think the big distinction is we didn't want to classify the entire complex as an essential services building because it triggers other requirements that actually add a significant cost to the whole structure.
I understand that. But what I'm talking about is an independent communications feed to that facility in the basement. You were planning one originally for the hardened facility, right next to it, basically. It seems like it shouldn't be too difficult to get communications independent into that EOC. The last thing that leaves is water. Water is a big deal. I was in an office building that was newly remodeled and designed when the Sierra Madre quake hit, cheered off the sprinkler heads. It wasn't supposed to do that, but it did. And all those laptops became inoperable. So, I am still concerned about the building above and the risk of water damage in that basement area. Can you comment on that?
Well, you know, the standards for conventional office building require a certain level of seismic bracing for sprinkler piping to try to prevent that kind of thing from happening. The level that's required for an essential services building, though, is an enhanced level of bracing and then an enhanced level of inspection during construction that verify that all those things have been installed in compliance with the requirements. So, if we did what was required by code for an office building, which essentially this is, it's still going to have everything be two-way braced for seismic things, and that all the details for that are actually prescribed by code.
Question, though, couldn't you take with this one room that we're talking about in the basement area, couldn't you build a waterproof ceiling in it? To where if water was coming down from up above, it would be sealed and directed to either side? You could put drains above it or whatever.
We would need to probably sort of check on any feasibility issues for that, but that doesn't sound like it's an unreasonable strategy to try to do, yeah.
So, it would seem like to me that that would be not terribly more expensive than just building a -- well, if we're going to have maybe a concrete roof, that might be different from whatever roof we were planning on for that.
Well, I mean, the lid of this room in the basement is a concrete deck that's the floor slab above. So, it's a question of how you deal with pipes that are on the two floors above that and whether or not you put some kind of, you know, develop some kind of detail that would deal with any kind of pipe penetrations in that area and deal with, you know, what you would do with water in the event of breakage above and divert it out of the building. So, there's a whole bunch of technical things I'm probably not prepared to sort of -- I need to think through and we need to sort of figure out as a design team what -- how you would do that.
It would seem like that it's possible, though, to where you could make a waterproof roof.
Sure.
Anything's possible with enough money.
That's right.
So, the whole point here is this solution, we need to be able to arrive at a solution that protects power, communications, and water damage in that facility. And if we can do that at a significantly lower cost, then I'm okay on this solution, even though it can't be called an official EOC. As long as it functions as well as an official EOC, that's what I'm about.
I don't know if it's worth mentioning, but I think the code standard of this new building will be a vast improvement over where you have your current EOC, just as far as when it was built as a building. So, that's worth.
Okay. I think Councilman Hen made a pretty good statement. Does anyone disagree with that? Okay. I think you got your direction on that. Okay. Any other comments on?
On what? EIR?
EIR. Yeah, why don't we hit that?
Just a few small ones. I think that Laura's gone, but I think -- and I thank you very much for answering a lot of the questions that were there about the landscaping and the amount of excavation and why it was being done. I think that did answer the question, certainly helped me. Just a couple of points, though. On the SEQA findings, page 14 and 15, it says the project would not necessitate new or expanded water entitlements, and the city would be able to accommodate the increased demand for potable water through existing water acquisition programs and pumping from existing wells. It seems like a funny statement in view of all the things we've been doing lately about water. Yes or no?
I don't know how I answer that question, Councilwoman Gardner.
I mean, it seems like it's fallacious.
Well, are you referring to generally the size and scope of the park versus the size and scope of the city office building? Because we're, in effect, replicating our water use that would not occur here, we're replicating it over there.
But I thought for the purpose of the EIR, we were considering that this.
That's probably so.
This game thing existed in its current use, so.
Sharon is going to bail me out. Thank you.
Oh, she's going to try. Actually, we've been going over the same question as we're working on water supply assessments that are required by state law for proposed residential projects. And it does seem just counterintuitive, especially with all the attention recently to water conservation and the ordinance that we just adopted. But what we're hearing in these analyses is that the projections that have been made by the agencies that supply us with water show that there is enough. And add to that the fact that the actual demand that Newport Beach has had over the past few or several years because of our conservation efforts have been lower than what they used to be. So, we aren't using our full allocation now so that we do have some cushion to take care of these new kinds of projects.
Okay. This is mumbo jumbo. I mean, really, because what -- two years ago, the Mets said, "Hey, no problem, guys." And what are they saying now? So, anyway, okay, but that's -- these things have their own little logic, and I won't challenge that. Just two points on the EIR itself. Mitigation measure 4.4.2, it says we can idle for 15 minutes. We are asking every private project that we've approved that they can have no idling of engines. And I think that we should hold ourselves to the same standard, not 15 minutes, not five minutes, but zero. That's what we've put on the ARI and others for their construction. Other things I don't need to be in the EIR. I'll just grab about them when they come up later.
Okay. Any other comments on the project? We'll entertain a motion then.
I'd like to move that we adopt Resolution 2009 dash certifying the city hall development project EIR. That three, we exempt the project from the zoning and development regulations of the
Idling.
Idling, okay. With a no. I'm a little -- as far as the no idling is concerned, I think that it's almost impossible to say there can be absolutely no idling because if a guy drives up, he pauses for a second before he has to go up in front of him, he's going to be idling. a second before the, he has to go up in front of him, he's going to be idling for a few minutes. I, I think that we need to, no extended idling, I would accept, but.
I just think that we need to, we have used this language, as I say, in the ARI and other private projects when they were dredging at China Cove. And I think when we do a public project, we need to be at least as hard on ourselves and our requirements as we are with the private individual.
I, I would support that and surely there's some language in ARI that we can replicate and use here that, that would, I hope Don accepts.
I'll accept that. Reasonable no idling, how's that? The item three was exempt the project from the zoning and development regulations of the Newport Beach Municipal Code and the Newport Village Plan Community Development Project, or Plan. Four, to adopt resolution 209 dash something, adopting a statement of overriding considerations and approving the schematic design for the Civic Center, Civic Center Project, also known as City Hall in the Park. And five, item five would be authorize the staff and construction manager CW Driver to prepare a design-build request for proposals to construct the proposed 450 space parking structure.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, before we take the vote on it, I'd just like to ask the staff to verify that we've addressed all the response to comments and through the mitigation measures and statement of overriding concerns that we've adequately addressed all those issues. Someone can make that statement.
I'm going to have, I, I believe we can. I'm going to have Jaime maybe come up and just clarify the idling question for you with assistance of legal counsel, I believe. And then I believe we can make that statement, Mr. Ren.
Okay.
But we, we should point out just for us thumbing through this to make sure everyone knows what page we're on. So, I'm thumbing through it too and haven't quite found it yet. Councilmember Gardner, if you see.
You want to know where the, the line was for the 15-point?
Yes. What mitigation measure is it?
4.4.2, it says equipment should be shut off when not in use, shall not idle for more than 15 minutes, and yada. It's at the very bottom of page 4.8 dash 42.
What was the mitigation order?
Mitigation measure 4.4.2.
Yeah, I'm thumbing through the table and I don't see it.
No, it wasn't, the language wasn't in there. It was in the, the bulk, which is, I say why I give you the page number.
Want to clarify that for us? If you could give us just a moment.
Yeah, it's not in there. You got to go back, it's not in the, in those counties, you have to go back into the.
Understood.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good evening. My name is Jennifer Holman. I'm with Remy Thomas Moussen Manley. And what is the question exactly you're asking?
The question is, there's a, there's probably two questions. One, there's an idling requirement that's in the EIR. It's not a mitigation measure, however.
It's listed as a mitigation measure on 4.8.42.
Right.
But is it missing from the?
We can't identify it in the mitigation monitoring reporting program.
Sorry, guys, didn't mean to hold you for half hour.
The mitigation measure itself is from chapter 4.4. So, if you look above there, it may be in that part of the mitigation monitoring plan, but you can modify the mitigation monitoring plan to include it. In fact, you should. And you can also, with it consistent with SEQA, you could decide that you might want to lower the idling time and that would not be a problem because I'm not aware of any impacts that would result from doing that. And that's the concern when you change a measure in SEQA. So, you could make it more stringent. You probably couldn't make it less stringent unless you consider the impacts of doing so. And I think that the, a common rule, and is it the ARB? ARB recommendation is five minutes. So, you could, you could say five minutes, for instance.
That seemed like a reasonable approach, Council?
Yeah, I just, as I say, I just would like to see us have consistency with what we.
That's a good point.
Ask of everybody.
Okay. I think we have that covered then. Comfortable with that?
Okay, is it in the mitigation monitoring plan?
I didn't see it in the plan, so we would add that to the plan, I imagine.
Yes.
It says shut off.
It should be in the greenhouse gas section rather than the air quality section.
That's different, though. It's still not the same.
Yeah, is Public Works Director 4.4.5 says, "Work crews will shut off equipment when not in use."
Right, but then it's, that same point, then says, "But it shall not idle for more than 15 minutes." If you're looking on page 4.4 dash 82, that's why it's, it's different, so.
I guess I would recommend to you that the mitigation measure 4.4.5 also now include shall not idle for more than five minutes.
Right.
So, that'd be amendment to the mitigation measure.
Or you could add it as a mitigation measure.
Add it separately.
Yes, yeah.
Is that clear to everyone? Thank you.
Is that acceptable?
I accept that.
Councilman Webb?
Yeah.
Okay.
Good to go.
Okay, Jaime, do you want to, can you verify my question that we've responded to everything?
Uh, yes, we've gone ahead. The response comments are comprehensive and they respond to each of the comments in detail. Um, in addition to the comments that are made tonight, I think each of the comments were addressed regarding landscaping, the lighting. And with regards to the construction noise, there is detailed mitigation measures in place to regulate the construction noise. Um, and there's a detailed analysis in the draft EIR.
Okay, thank you. All right, please vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, Mr. Kiff, you wanted to make some comments?
I did. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. I, I wanted to thank the, starting with the council, the, the folks that worked on this so hard and identify them by name. Certainly, your willingness to work with us through this process, we've involved a lot of your time, especially the building committee's time. That's been Mayor Selich, Mr. Webb, and, and Mr. Rosansky. A, a number of meetings during mid-afternoon when you, when you're all busy over at our design workroom. They, they haven't ended yet, of course, but we sure, that, that time commitment needs to be recognized. Secondly, the design committee, this is a volunteer group made up of Steve Sandlin, Rush Hill, Andy Bowden, Walt Richardson, Linda Taylor, and then led ably by Larry Tucker. As you folks know, they dedicated countless hours, all in their volunteer time, towards this project. I, I want to recognize a, a couple of folks then on the design team. Steve Beta, my colleague, the public works director, I think helped kept the, keep this moving and on time. I really appreciate that. Uh, same for Jaime, whom you just saw. Jaime Maria with our planning department really worked with, as a team member with us to, to get this job done as well as with the consultant, and that's LSA. And I know the consultants are paid to do this, but we appreciate Nicole Dubois's efforts in, in completing this document, again, at the time it was scheduled. And then lastly, our, the overall design team, which includes Steve Chado and Sarah Keel and, and Greg Matola, a couple of other folks here, Daniel Lee's here, all from BCJ and PWP. They've been very diligent in responding to our requests and our back and forth that we have with them. We'll continue to work with them to get the project done. And then finally, the crew from CW Driver, William Hahn is here and, and Robert Schaefer sitting over here. They've been sitting at the table with us doing cost estimation and working through all of our constructability issues. And I, and they've, again, done a yeoman's job to keep this on schedule. So, I, lastly, want to thank my assistant Shirley O'Borne for keeping us all on schedule because she really does all the, the invitations and the things that make sure we all show up at the right place at the right time. So, with that, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, well, I'd also like to thank the staff for all the hard work on this. Just about a year ago, that Dave's predecessor, Homer Blue Dale, and I sat down and set tonight's date, a year ago, is the day that we would do what we just did. And it was a lot, it took a lot of effort. I know messy things like Sharon's EIR schedules would get in the way from time to time, but we managed somehow pull it all together and get it done. So, I, I really want to thank the staff for all the hard work because I know you guys really worked hard to, to meet this date. And also, I'd like to thank the city hall design committee also, some of you still out in the audience, Rush and Steve and Andy, Larry Tucker. You guys have put in a lot of hard work on this and I think the results we see tonight are directly attributable to all the work that you've put into this project. So, my thanks go out to, to you guys. And on that note, I would like to, it's been suggested to me, and I think it's also been suggested to the other members of the building committee, that we might want to amend our resolution and keep these guys on standby until we get out to bid, just in case something comes up and we might need to avail ourselves of their services. So, maybe you could bring that back at, at another meeting. Okay, any other comments before we move on? Okay, well.
Mr. Mayor, I have, I, I think there's one other person that ought to be singled out. I was going to say Dave Kiff. And that would be Dave Kiff. He's done a yeoman's job of keeping everybody on schedule. Did a great, did a great job thanking everybody else, but, but you provided the staff, the staff leadership that got us here, too. Thank you, Dave.
Okay, item 25, this is the appeal, the hearing officers denial of use permits and reasonable accommodations for the Yellowstone Women's First Step House Incorporated. And I understand we're going to continue that till December the 2nd at 6 o'clock PM. May I have a motion to that?
Make a motion to continue it.
Second?
Okay, please vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
Yeah, I won't bother with it. Okay, next item is current business, council review of status report on six of the city councils 2009 priorities. Remember our discussion this morning, Dave?
I do, Mr. Mayor. I'll try to do it in a minute.
Isn't this receive and file?
For the folks at home, these are the six items, half of the council priorities. The staff report is available on the website. Basically, we're, one of them is, is an effective traffic management plan. That is within the capital improvement project, so we're moving along on schedule. The second one was completing the schematic design phase in the EIR. So, now we can say, say that was accomplished. The, the next item involves a number of our park projects, including Oasis. And again, I'd let folks read that at home or if the council had any questions about Next comes the discussion about banning ranch and this remains a priority for your council because you're still going along two tracks where if there's an opportunity to acquire that with resources as entirely open space, that's still one track that you're following as well as following the developer's proposal to entitle the property. And then finally, almost finally, sorry, the next one is water quality improvement projects and a tiered water rate structure. The rates were on the agenda tonight. We, we are bringing back something to you in March of 2010 after the rates are implemented that would envision a tiered water rate structure, if that is something for your consideration again. And then finally, the last one is about lower bay dredging. As Councilmember DeGel mentioned, we have submitted the testing now here on November 24th or so and will continue to look for hopefully some additional funding in the president's budget when that comes out in January and we should be ready to roll with that project. Again, me being the eternal optimist.
Okay, thank you. Any public comment on this? Okay, seeing none, we'll go to item number 27, facilities financing plan review.
Uh, Mr. Mayor and council members, this last item, that your, your finance committee has seen this and this is basically, very quickly, an opportunity to incorporate the proposed budget of the Civic Center project into the facilities replacement program. That's a large spreadsheet that folks are looking at now, if you're watching at home, if you're still awake. And it does include those updated numbers. It does stay consistent with our, with the facility replacement program's goal in that it, the debt service associated with a number of significant capital improvement projects from a new police station headquarters to new fire stations always stays below 5% of our general front cost. So, if we can continue to hold our costs down on projects like this one, we're in good shape.
Okay, any questions of staff? Okay, seeing none. Anybody from the public want to comment on this item? Okay, this is just receive and file, no action necessary. Motion for reconsiderations, Madam Clerk?
A motion to reconsider the vote on any action taken by the city council, either this meeting or the previous meeting, may be made only by one of the council members who voted with the prevailing side.
Okay, any motions for reconsideration? Okay, seeing none, we're going to adjourn to Wednesday, December the 2nd at 5:30 for the closed session and at 6:00 PM for an adjourned regular meeting to consider Yellowstone recovery use permit and reasonable accommodation appeals.